Welcome, everyone. Woodland Park Regular City Council Meeting for Thursday, August the 15th. And Cindy will take a roll.
Thank you. Mayor Turley.
Present.
Gary Bravetto.
Here.
Bob Carlson.
Here.
Carol Potts.
Here.
Ken Matthews.
Here.
John Schaefer.
Eric Smith.
Here.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, I guess it's, I should say it's nice to see a big turnout tonight, but usually when we have a big turnout, that means a little more controversy and maybe a longer meeting, but I always look at it and say it is what it is and we work through it. So, welcome to everyone. For presentations, we're gonna do Lisa Parnell first, and then I have a little something also.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight I come before you on behalf of the Keep Woodland Park Beautiful Committee as the city liaison to that group. And we recently reported our annual report to the Keep America Beautiful Organization, which we do every year. It follows a reporting cycle of 1 July to 30 June. So, we thought it would be good to share our annual review, which is required in our bylaws, to you, which basically is a synopsis of what we've done over the course of the last year. So, let's see if I can get some...
Can you get the slides, Kelly?
Thank you. Just have a couple of slides and actually, thank you Cindy for handing out the annual review. I have a hard copy. It's a little more extensive than what I'll present. I'm just gonna present some basic highlights of that. But what you have there with you is the actual annual review and also a couple of additional things, some priorities and goals that we set over the course of this year and whatnot to let you know what we're doing. So, my first slide here is just to remind us of what Keep Woodland Park Beautiful is really all about. And our mission is to protect the community wildlife and the area's natural beauty. And we do this through education and enforcement and encouraging active community participation and effort. And we have a six-fold purpose. The first one is that we need to enlist volunteers to help reduce litter. We promote responsible handling of trash. We encourage enhancement of public views in areas. We recognize businesses, groups, and individuals through our beautification awards as community improvements when they're seen in the area. We provide policy recommendations to you and also in addition to that, we will take on any projects related to the mission as requested by you and the city manager. So, in 2012, 2013, here are some highlights. We were awarded once again the Keep America Beautiful Standards of Excellence status in 2012. And we calculated with all of our major events, a benefit of $11,040 with a cost of $1,090, which included donations that were given to Keep Woodland Park Beautiful in addition to the budget that you set for us to utilize. We also reviewed our Keep Woodland Park Beautiful priorities, and I did attach that to the review as well. And this was actually last documented. We had discussed priorities and goals, but not put them on paper since 2009. So, that's been really great to kinda rejuvenate us and prioritize us with goals that we want, goals that are easy to implement and can be implemented within reality, as well as those in the long-term that we wanna achieve. Our membership this year, we lost three members, but we gained three members. We gained three great members. And one of those that we lost, I'd like to just note, was to Board of Adjustment, which on the Board of Adjustment, you actually can't be on another committee. So, that member had to resign from Keep Woodland Park Beautiful to be on Board of Adjustment. And then, of course, me, changing out as the new city liaison with the city planner turnover this year. And then, we also did just very recently lose our council member support, our member on our committee, Terry Harrison. Our bylaws are split up, our actions that we're taking on are split up into three categories and three subcommittees. One of those is community awareness and education. The second one is beautification efforts. And the third one, the last one, is for litter reduction. And so, I've done a slide for each, and I'll discuss them in that light. We have currently a Keep Woodland Park Beautiful website, which we have done many enhancements to. And also along with that, we have added a Keep Woodland Park Beautiful Facebook site, as well as Alyssa Meyer had helped us out with doing a bear aware site, which has been wonderful. And that was one of her things that she presented to you in March as a mitigation effort to the bear problem in the city. And the city homepage now has an Adopt a Spot toggle button on the homepage, so that you can go directly to our Adopt a Spot application and apply for that, which we've seen an increase in our Adopt a Spots this year. So, we really feel between this and then also putting it out at the cleanup this year, we've gained some insight and participation into that. The bear aware training was extremely successful on May 13th. Mayor, you were there. And we had 20 people attend, and that was wonderful, because they gave us all sorts of wonderful techniques that we could utilize to mitigate bears if they became nuisances, but still consider them and make sure that they're safe as well. We had a bear aware drawing contest, and the kiddos came and got pens from the mayor, as well as their drawings were posted at the library. And along with that, we did do a table with all sorts of information on how to live with bears and just all sorts of information that they could utilize during the summer months. Our Beautification and Community Involvement Subcommittee has really kind of taken on a new youth downtown beautification program that Woodland Park, Keep Woodland Park Beautiful is endorsing. And through this, and actually Jan Comer and Tanner Coy and their businesses in the downtown area, Tweeds and Vintage Vines are donation funding this at this point in time. And we have initiated just recently a vote to award them, along with the four youth that are providing downtown cleanup with beautification awards. So, you'll see that in the near future, but you'll notice I'm wearing a tee-shirt. I don't normally wear tee-shirts to city council, but I wanted you all to see the tee-shirt that they kind of put together. The kids are wearing these in the downtown area when they clean up. So, if you see them, that's what they're doing. We are really hoping to grow this program and hopefully maybe even get some funding that we can help them with tools and the tee-shirts in the future. And then, we also wanna increase our beautification awards scope, doing more of those. This next and last slide here is on our Litter Prevention and Waste Reduction Subcommittee. And every year, we do a litter index survey where we have members go out and they go all through the city and they do a rate on a scale of one to four, the amount of litter in four quadrants of the city. And the one that was the highest littered was the northeast quadrant, and that's the one that we've seen a lot of litter in years past as well. We speculate this might be due to the fact that it contains the middle school and the high school and also in the forest edge area. So, that rated a 3.1 on a scale of one to four, four being extremely littered. And the city average was 2.5, which is in-between slightly littered and littered. So, we did that intentionally after Memorial Day weekend and before June 8th, which was the cleanup, so that we could get kind of a good realistic perspective of that and then afterwards see the improvement from the cleanup. The cleanup is the last thing that we did in this area, most recent thing, and we had two, the result of that was we had two 15 cubic yard dumpsters, and the one was three-quarters full and the other was a quarter full. And we actually did have 10 extra bags of recyclables that we donated to, that we took to the recycling center in Divide. And we had participation increase by nearly 40% this year from the previous year, which is just awesome. So, we had a lot of the community come out and help us clean up the city. We had 90 participants and around 15 volunteers. And also this year, as I mentioned a little bit earlier, we've seen six just so far, and we're expecting a couple more Adopt a Spot applications. So, that's kind of it in a nutshell. If there's anything, any questions that I can answer? But you should have everything that you need in the annual review report that I've handed out.
Very good. Any comments, questions for Lisa?
Can I get a tee-shirt?
Yes, you can, actually. Jan Comer has these at Vintage Vines and Curves, and then also Tanner Coy has some with Tweeds on the front as well at his shop. So, feel free. That would be great. Thank you.
Any others? I'll just say, you know, I appreciate everything that the Keep Woodland Park Beautiful Committee does. Again, it's one of those things that where so many people in our community, the volunteers come together and do so many good things, and it's greatly appreciated.
Thank you. I'll let them know that the next meeting. Thank you.
Moving on, still on item four, but not on the agenda as listed. A few, what was it, about a month ago, something like that, that David Butterby and I went up to University of Colorado Boulder to a special event where Suzanne Leclair, who's our deputy city clerk, completed her, what, three years of training and for being a city clerk? And I just wanna say, you know, so many people don't necessarily understand or have a great appreciation for what all city clerks do. If you sit on the city council here, and especially as mayor, you really understand the importance of a good city clerk, that many of the things, and I've said it before, many of the things that we do here seemed like they just kinda are routine and you just go through them. Well, that's because the city clerks do such an outstanding job of making these things happen and making sure all the legal requirements are met, so that we don't have any great issues. And that's very important as you're going through these. Also, it's important to note that in our town, the city clerk is not an elected official, but in some municipalities, the city clerk is in fact, they have to run for election. But that being said, we've been fortunate here to have an outstanding city clerk, and Suzanne Leclair is now certified by the International Institute of Municipal Clerks. And I'd like to read a letter into the, that I received into the record. It's to David Turley, Mayor. Dear David Turley, Suzanne Leclair, CMC of City of Woodland Park has earned the designation of Certified Municipal Clerk, CMC, which is awarded by the International Institute of Municipal Clerks. IMC, and that's the International Institute, grants the CMC designation only to those municipal clerks who complete demanding education requirements and who have a record of significant contributions to their local government, their community, and state. The International Institute of Municipal Clerks founded in 1947 has 10,300 members throughout the United States, Canada, and 15 other countries. And the mission of this global nonprofit corporation is to enhance the education opportunities and professional development of its diverse membership. In light of the speed and drastic nature of change these days, lifelong learning is not only desirable, it is necessary for all in local government to keep pace with growing demands and changing needs of the citizens we serve. Your city can take immense pride in Suzanne's educational accomplishments and achievements of this milestone. On behalf of the IMC Board of Directors, I am honored to endorse the conferring of CMC, again, that's Certified Municipal Clerk to Suzanne Leclair, City of Woodland Park. We share your pride in this achievement, and we applaud your support of the role Suzanne plays in your city. And for those that don't know, Suzanne's in the back. I'm probably not gonna, absolutely. I'm not gonna ask Suzanne to come forward. Suzanne had a little accident the other day, and her leg is not in real good shape right now for getting around. So, unless we wanted to see you come up on your little device, but, and I appreciate not only what you've done in this accomplishment, but also the great help that you give me and things that I need as mayor. So, I applaud you and look forward to hopefully you being around for a long time and supporting the city. Thank you. And with that, we'll move on to item five, additions, deletions, or corrections to the agenda. And Cindy, do we have any?
We do not.
Okay. And we'll move on to the consent calendar, and for that, I do turn to our city clerk, Cindy Morris.
Thank you. There are four items for your consideration this evening. The first is the approval of the minutes of August 1st. Second is application for the renewal of the City Market 3.2% beer off-premise liquor license. The third is the July Statement of Expenditures Review and Approval. And the fourth is consideration of approval for the contract with Wildcat Construction for the Fountain Creek FEMA construction project in the amount of $1,288,101.50. What questions may I answer?
Yes, Bob.
On item D, approving a contract for Wildcat Construction for the Fountain Creek. This came pretty low. This is great. And by my calculations, it shows that we have about $129,000 of city funds, not the FEMA funds, in excess of what we had budgeted for that. You can do your own calculations, I don't know. But does that kinda go back into the contingency fund, or what happens to those monies?
Well, first realize that it's a cost-sharing agreement. FEMA pays 75%, city pays 25%. This is the initial construction bid. Hopefully, we'll have no change orders, but we'll wait and see until we're all done.
Any other comments? And just for the public to be aware, we go through these consent calendars normally fairly quickly, but these are included in our packet, all of the details. So, we review these, all the council members do, prior to coming to the meeting, just so that you're aware. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
Have a motion in second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll take a vote.
Thank you. Bravetto.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Harvey.
Yes.
No, yeah, Matthews. Sorry.
Yes.
I've got the old ones listed. I apologize. My gosh. Schaefer.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Turley.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
And item seven is unfinished business, of which we have none. We have no ordinances on initial posting for this evening. Item nine is public hearings, and we do have three items, and Sally will be presenting those. Sally Riley, our Department of Planning, Director of Planning. I will read a statement into the record before we begin the public hearings. Council members use electronic devices to access materials relevant to the public hearing before us, for example, instead of paper. Be assured that as the common practice of this city council, that these devices are not being used for any texting, emailing, or other communications during these public hearings, just to ensure that we're not receiving any inputs from anybody outside of the council chambers, and that in the hearings, we consider the facts that are presented here, and that's what we use for making our decisions. And I will now turn to Sally. And Sally, do you wanna talk a little bit about how we're gonna handle, these, all three of these are sort of related, how you wanna present those?
That's correct.
Because I think as we go through annexation, we'll drift into the zoning discussions probably also, but that's...
Yes. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Turley, council members. We would like to take items A, B, and C together, and they are associated with two annexation plats and then the zoning ordinance, and then there will be a fourth vote that will deal with the annexation agreement. So, just to briefly review the hearing proceedings this evening, after the staff's presentation, then the applicant has a brief presentation. City council will have opportunities to ask questions of the staff and the applicant. Then, the mayor will open the public comment portion and allow for the neighbors and supporters of the project to speak. Then, close that public comment portion. The applicant will then have an opportunity for rebuttal. Council will again be able to ask questions. And then, once you feel you have heard adequate testimony this evening, then you will move into your deliberations portion, with which you can express your opinions based on the evidence that you've heard regarding these items. There will be then motions, four motions this evening, that I will outline at the end of my presentations, and then votes taken on each of those motions. Thus far, in an annexation process, you began back on April 4th with the Resolutions for Substantial Compliance, basically accepting the petition for annexation. Then, we began a four-week public notice period consecutively in the newspaper. We began drafting the annexation agreement, of which we'll discuss this evening. Notices were sent to our taxing districts for their comments. The Planning Commission reviewed the zoning ordinance and made a recommendation to you this evening. And on June 6th, we had the first public hearing that was the approval of Resolution 757, 758 for finding a fact and the first reading of the ordinances. Tonight is the final step in the annexation and zoning process, that you will hear a public hearing, review the annexation agreement, as well as the zoning ordinance. This is the subject property that is shown in the aerial outlined in yellow on County Road 231. And then, to the north is Highway 24. And you can see that the city limits are just to the northwest slightly, that provides for the contiguity to this 1.8 acre tract of land owned. Since you saw this, Mr. Baker has now purchased the Hirschbeck property and still has the McCarle property under contract. The annexation plats are done in two phases. The contiguity for the first phase is obtained through the property to the northwest, the skyline south annexation. And then, the contiguity for plat number two is gained on either side of the first tract that was in plat number one. The applicant has submitted a concept plan for us to consider, and the applicant's representative, Tim Seibert, is going to review this in greater detail. So, I will just touch on a couple of points of interest for this site plan. First of all, the existing building will remain and will function as a maintenance shop for Mr. Baker's trash trucks and other vehicles. There is parking area on a terrace level behind the maintenance building, in which these trucks will be parked overnight until they're ready to be serviced out for the next day's pickup. There is also employee parking on the site. There's an area in which empty containers, dumpsters, will be stored, that will be no more than 2,000 square feet. And there is an existing home that currently is occupied on the site that will be remodeled and serve as the office for Woodland County, Teller County trash. And the office site will access, be accessed from a single point or driveway along 231. Lastly, there's the proposal for a recycling drop-off center that will be stationed or located in the back of the property. There are proposals for a berm and a wall to be placed along the parking and storage area. And on top of that wall will be a privacy fence, and this is in order to buffer the office building and the neighborhood from the storage of the trucks and the recycling center. There will be other improvements done on the site that Mr. Seibert will be able to speak to. The zoning map currently in the city shows the property outlined in hot pink. This is the community commercial zone. You can see the community commercial in our town is located typically along the highways. There's quite a bit along Highway 24 on the east side of Woodland Park that extends up by the high school, and then it extends down southward as well. And there's a bit of community commercial that exists on Highway 67. So, that gives you a perspective of the location where community commercial typically exists. To share some photographs of the existing property, this is looking north with the maintenance building. Mr. Seibert will talk about the proposed improvements to the site that would meet the city standards. Should the annexation and the zoning be approved, then the applicant will be moving forward into a conditional use permit for the contractor services use and the vehicle repair use. And also, a special use permit would be required for the recycling center, and there are 11 criteria with which we evaluate, the CUP and the SUP, and that will be the next phase in this process, should this be approved this evening. This is a view that I took the shot from standing above the property on Highway 24 and looking down onto the parking area. It's fairly protected. You can see the grade difference between the highway and then the upper terrace area. And you can also see that there is adjacent to this property, a parcel of land that is owned by CDOT, and that is zoned M1 or industrial in the county with which there are empty dumpsters stored adjacent to this property. Here is a photo of the structure that will serve as the office. It currently has a single driveway that will be eliminated off of the 231. And you can also see it here as you come approach the maintenance building. And you can also see it here as you come approach the maintenance building. Now, the surrounding properties to this area. This is the Turner's Home, which is immediately adjacent to where the office building and the storage area will be. In the lower right is their driveway. So you can see the proximity and looking southwest toward Main Street. Now, looking south, the properties on Main Street, these are zoned R1 in Teller County. So it does abut a residentially zoned neighborhood. Looking west, you can see the CDOT property at the elevation above County Road 231. And then this on the right is a photo of the M1-zoned storage area for waste management. And beyond that is property that is called Aspen Valley Ranch. This is zoned agriculture in Teller County. The contiguity, as I mentioned earlier, is obtained with the adjacency of the Skyline South annexation across the highway. And the state statutes do say that highways are, you can jump them in order to gain your contiguity. The statutes do not specify exactly how that is applied. It is at the discretion of the council to acknowledge that this is acceptable or not with the annexation. We firmly believe that this is an acceptable approach. Also, with the state statutes and setting forth the findings of facts, when you reviewed Resolution 5757 and 785, that's 58. 58. That should be reversed. The eligibility has basically three criteria. First is the community of interest, in which the 1/6th contiguity is met, as well as acknowledging that a solid waste collection and recycling services are critical to the needs of a community, that the area can be urban, is urban, or can be urbanized. The area we do consider as urban primarily because there are water and sewer lines that exist in the adjacent roadway. There is easy accessibility to an arterial Highway 24 from County Road 231 at the signalized intersection about a half a mile west of here. The comp plan map identifies this property as neighborhood commercial, which is compatible with the community commercial zone and a less intensive zone than industrial. It's capable of being integrated into the city. These uses can be supported by our current city services. And should it be annexed, it could approximately generate $1,100 a year in property tax. Now, I'd like to move on to the annexation agreement because that is where the council is able to add additional conditions and terms to the annexation. The first section in the annexation agreement deals with land use. Item A speaks about establishing the community commercial zone district. Item B speaks to the conditional use permit for the contractor services, vehicle repair, and the special use permit for the recycling center, although there are no assurances of approval of the conditional use permit or the special use permit at this time. The Anexer acknowledges that the transfer of trash is prohibited. This is being proposed as a storage area where the trash trucks may be emptied at the end of their route and come back without a load of trash compacted in the back, or they may have trash in the back, depending upon how we move through the conditional use permit. At this time, the applicant would like to be able to store the trash overnight within the vehicles. Item D provides for an interim operation of uses until such date the CUP or the SUP is approved, or until November 30th. However, it does have an automatic extension to that November 30th date as long as the applicant is in the process of the CUP/SUP. The other condition in this area is to ensure that the Anexer moves quickly on this. And so, we require that that application for the CUP/SUP is submitted next month by September 10th. The next section in the annexation agreement deals with the public and private improvements. Item A talks about the Anexer financing all the improvements that are required by the city, county, state, and federal laws and regulations. And in this item A, it has been established that based on the traffic impact analysis and the roadway evaluation that was completed recently, that the Anexer is required to install a new layer of chip and seal on County Road 231 from his driveway west to the intersection of Highway 24. And that improvement must be secured with $17,500 security plus 10%. And it must be completed by August 1st, 2014, or the security will be released to Teller County in total. I'm going to speak more about this condition in just a bit after we get through the rest of the terms and conditions in the annexation agreement. Item, that should be, item B is another security that is either a cash, letter of credit. And that will be for all the other public and private improvements that Mr. Baker is required to do as a result of the conditional use and special use permit. This was a suggestion by the neighbors that, you know, suggested that the city give them some assurance and guarantee that these improvements would be accomplished. And we thought that was a very good idea. And Mr. Baker has agreed to place a guarantee with the city that he will complete these improvements. Some of those improvements are going to be tying the water and sewer lines into the mains. Other improvements will be the drainage improvements, the fencing and the wall, and all the things that will be identified through the conditional use and special use process for those improvements. And we'll have the security to ensure that they are accomplished. The next item deals with the questionable area in this part of town. There's a discrepancy with a section line. Mr. Seibert will speak to that. And also, that currently this property is unplatted. It is by deed. And we are requesting that a final plat of legal subdivision is recorded within six months of the approval. Section 3 deals with the water. And Mr. Baker understands that water taps will need to be purchased for each building. A payment of a water development fee will be necessary at time of zoning development permit. And that there are no guarantees for future water service on this site. That's a standard clause that we have on residential plaits. Under wastewater, again, the purchase of sewer taps is necessary for each building. In addition, the septic tank or system that serves the home, the existing home, will be abandoned, which will be a good thing for the environment, for that, both these buildings to tie into the central sewer system. And that this parcel is subject to the terms and conditions of a reimbursement agreement with the hospital in order to tie into the sewer line. The rest of the items in the annexation agreement are pretty straightforward and legally bind the applicant to those items. Now, I'd like to talk a little bit more about the traffic impact analysis and the geotechnical evaluation that was completed by consultants. And we do have here this evening Jeff Hodgson, who is the traffic engineer, who will be able to speak in more detail. This is a portion of West Street or County Road 231 that accesses over to the property. In the traffic analysis, Mr. Hodgson has evaluated this very carefully and has determined that with the addition of a recycling center and up to 12 trucks, trash trucks, that will be operating out of this site with the approximate number of employees on site, that this use will generate 111 average daily trips as a low or a high of 165 average daily trips. That is, currently, there are 32 average daily trips that are being generated by Mr. Baker's current use. This is a 5.2 to 8.9 increase in existing traffic volumes. So a fairly small traffic volume. About 970 trips are on this road on an average day currently. So it is barely putting it over 1,000 average daily trips once it is fully built out. And Mr. Hodgson will speak to that a little bit further. As a result of the analysis, they have said that the existing road surface is in good shape. It has a 1.5 inch chip and seal over a very stable native granular soils. The existing roadway is 24 feet in width. And the traffic impact study states that the traffic increase by this site and resulting short-term total traffic volumes should not be significant enough to justify roadway upgrades by this project. Participation in a fair and equitable manner in the future upgrades to a rural collector, to the rural collector minimum widths would be reasonable. And Mr. Hodgson will speak to his analysis. With NTAC, the engineering recommendation states, based upon existing conditions of the road, the subgrade soils, and the anticipated traffic, a new layer of chip and seal would be a cost-effective approach to provide a suitable all-weather road surface. Chip-seal sections on the order of 3/8 inch to 3/4 inch placed on the existing roadway would be anticipated. Chip-seal surface should be in accordance with Teller County requirements. The staff believes that this recommendation is proportional to the impacts of 100 to 165 average daily trip increase. We did, however, and I noted in the staff report, that we had received some concerns from Teller County. And that this letter identifies the Teller County's review of the traffic impact report and the roadway analysis. And they are claiming that NTAC's assessment is not correct and that more extensive roadway improvements are needed than a chip and seal overlay. I'll give you a few minutes to have a chance to look through this technical letter. And then I'll continue.
Is that the one you emailed to us, or is that a different one?
No, this is a different one.
That's what I thought.
Sally, one question on this letter in specific. Did the county have an agreement with the current property owner on maintenance of the road?
We'll have to ask the property owner that. I don't believe so, but they can answer that when they get up here. The city engineer and I did meet with Cheryl Decker and with Brian Kincaid last week, earlier this, last week, earlier this week. This week. And we basically had a good discussion, agreed to disagree a little bit, and said that we would like for the engineers who prepared the reports to be able to get together. We do believe that a chip and seal overlay is an appropriate improvement considering the proportional impacts to the road. And we will work through this.
Yeah, I'll just make a comment on that while we're on it. We can say that as the city, and if we were annexing that, but it's still a county road, and it belongs to the county. And they're the ones that's going to have to make the final assessment on that, not the city. That's my comment. So if they have concerns, then that's their road, and that should be their concerns.
I'd like to move on to factors when we consider selecting a zone. You saw this chart in June. And when a private property owner approaches us for annexation and we consider what is the appropriate slot in our zoning code, we look at it very carefully and try to consider future uses here as well as what is being proposed on the short term. And as I mentioned, if the annexation and zoning goes through, we could have chosen a heavy-service, commercial, light-industrial zone for this application. However, that would be a permitted use for contractor services, and it would not have gone through the public hearing process. Instead, a community commercial, which is a less intense zone, it requires the planning, both the Planning Commission and the City Council to review the conditional use and the special use. And felt that it was important for this project or proposal to have public hearings in order to get as much input as possible and try to create the best possible mitigation approach for the neighborhood. The definition for community commercial is the land use designation is intended to provide locations for types of general retail, office, and community services that serve the Woodland Park community specifically. It may provide for more intense community It may provide for more intense community activity than a neighborhood commercial designation. Neighborhood commercial is our least intensive area, and typically located only in the area between, well, it's in this area, between Central Business District and urban residential. But not as intense as service commercial land use designations, which services the commercial needs of the local region. Specific design and buffer requirements must be met for those commercial areas located adjacent to neighborhoods, which I've described briefly. We ask about five questions when we're looking at a rezoning, and they deal with the comprehensive plan, our ability to serve, and what has changed in the neighborhood to justify a rezone. First, I'll start by explaining the consistency with the comprehensive plan map. When we approved the comprehensive plan map, there were only two designations for areas outside the city limits. That was rural residential and neighborhood commercial. We intentionally chose the terms neighborhood commercial so that we could start at the very lowest level of a commercial project if someone was coming into the city and asking for a commercial use, and then be able to negotiate from there up. So, that was an intentional decision for the comprehensive plan map to show only those two future land uses as we evaluate the potential for property to come in. Community commercial noted earlier is not as intensive as service commercial or light industrial, but a commercial zone that is typically located adjacent to the eastern and western reaches of US Highway 24 and the northern sections of Highway 67. Here is the comprehensive plan map, and you can see it's kind of a lilac color that this area we have felt was going to be, in the future, developed commercially, and so that's why it's identified as the lilac color. And then you can see that the light yellow is the rest of the county areas outside the city limits that are currently residential. We also ask ourselves, is the proposed zoning consistent with the comprehensive plan goals and objectives? The goals and objectives encourage economic vitality with a critical service of solid waste collection for the community, and a need for recycling collection center for environmental sustainability. It provides opportunities for contractor services adjacent to US Highway 24, but outside the downtown Central Business District area. It's consistent with the pattern of existing community commercial property in Woodland Park. Then, does the city have the ability to serve with the city's planned water resources? Yes, the commercial uses are included in the per capita water projections, and there is a 10-inch main that exists in West Street. Does the city have the ability to serve this property with wastewater services and treatments? Yes, the utility department is planning an expansion of the wastewater treatment plant in the next two to five years to serve a population of 14,100. And, the existing eight-inch water line is in West Street.
Let me just ask before you leave that. Kip, is the, is that two to five years, is that on track with, that we're going to have the build-out and the wastewater treatment in two to five years to serve 14,100?
Population-wise, we'll build it bigger to handle more loading. You know, water-wise, we plan for 12,000.
I just want to make sure that the statement that we're being made into the record, that the wastewater treatment plant will have an expansion in the next two to five years to serve a population of 14,100, is that accurate, or is it actually a longer period for that projection for the plant to be completed?
I believe that's accurate.
Okay.
Then, usually, we ask, what has changed in the neighborhood that would cause a rezoning? That really isn't applicable to an annexation, because annexations are required to be zoned within 60 days. In fact, this neighborhood has not changed. The M1 zone on this property has been in existence for quite some time. This use has been there for over a decade, so there hasn't been a change. However, the city's site development standards will be applied, and we'll review, including the drainage, traffic grading, landscaping, tree preservation, lighting, parking, architectural design, and other site design considerations, which are more, I'll use the word, more stringent than if the property stayed in the county. So, we have the ability through our land use code to try to get the very best product possible for a well-designed and mitigated property.
Sally, when you say M1 zone has been there for some time, exactly how many years has it been zoned M1?
Boy, in the 70s. Yeah, it's 1978 is what I've been told. I know, I've been here 30 years, and it was being used, this strip was being used as a waste transfer station. Thank you. In your packet are the annexation agreement and ordinances, the four motions that I spoke with for this evening. The first one would relate to the annexation agreement. The second motion would be for Ordinance 1187. The third would be for Annexation Plat Number Two and Ordinance 1188. And then, the last motion would deal with the rezone, 1189. I'll now turn it over to the applicant, unless you would like for staff to clarify any questions.
Yes, John?
A question. When you discussed improvements, are those, the completion dates?
John, into the microphone, please. Thanks.
When you discussed improvements, those are understood and agreed to with the annexor?
Yes.
And is there any kind of a schedule tied to when those improvements might be completed? Whether it's a scheduled date, or so many weeks, months after a permit is issued?
The process for the conditional use permit will move along fairly rapidly, because they're required to submit their application by next month, and have that completed by the end of November. That will then allow the applicant to move forward with the improvements. There is no deadline in the annexation agreement for those to be completed. It generally, however, may be wrapped into the conditional use conditions, that they are completed with a certain period of time. We will have that security in place. So, he will be highly motivated to get those improvements done, so that he gets the security back. The only deadline is for the road improvements to be done by August 1st of 2014.
Good. Thank you. I have a number of questions, but I'm going to hold them, and I might get them answered.
Okay.
So, I'll hold them for now. Any others for Sally at this time? If not, we'll hear from the applicant. And Sally, in a little bit, when I have my questions, I'll have one of your slides I want to go back to.
Okay. That will be fine. This is different. Oh, I see. Thank you.
Okay, space bars for it. Well, my name is Mike Perini. I'm a US Air Force Colonel, retired. I live at 1150 Spruce Ridge Lane in Woodland Park, and I've been in town for more than a decade. Good evening, Mayor, and distinguished City Council representatives, city staff, and members of the public. I'm owner of-
And you're speaking for the applicant, correct?
That is correct. I'm the lead of the team.
Okay.
I'm owner of Perini &amp; Associates, a full-service public relations and marketing firm that is proudly headquartered in Woodland Park, and has served a number of our local businesses, special event coordinators, government agencies, and nonprofits. And I've been asked by Teller County Waste to lead a short presentation for the group in an effort to provide additional background and important facts that need to be heard by City Council members with regards to this annexation request. I will briefly cover these four areas, and Mr. Tim Seibert that Sally introduced already will assist me during several sections of this presentation. First, I'd like to start with being sure that all of us in this gathering are aware of the history and Teller County Waste's dedication to local environmental stewardship. We are indeed fortunate that Mr. Baker's business serves our community, but also, he has been trusted by other communities to deliver quality waste management programs and services, and you can see those cities on that slide. We can assure members of City Council that his legacy of good stewardship and commitment to keeping Woodland Park beautiful with annexation will continue. As you deliberate on this annexation vote tonight, we would like to offer you three additional facts to consider. First, the number of customers who reside in Woodland Park over half of his business. And second, the results of the value of recycling to current customers. There exists a huge wave of positive support for recycling. And third, the tie to the sustainability goals of the city, which has already been mentioned, that waste collection and recycling services are critical to the city, and it has been proven already a community of interest requirement. So, your positive annexation vote and follow-on conditional and special use permit approval process will allow for property improvements, a very positive outcome for the local neighbors, and another strong demonstration of Teller County Waste's efforts to continue to enhance our community with real action. Now, Tim will talk about these improvements, as well as comments from Teller County, the traffic study, and the road evaluation. Tim?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of City Council. Tim Seibert with NES Incorporated. We are a land planning and landscape architecture consulting firm based at 508 South Dehone Street in Colorado Springs, Colorado. Thank you for this opportunity to speak to you tonight regarding the proposal for Teller County Waste. What's before you is the conceptual site plan that was submitted with the annexation request. This is not the application for the special use or the conditional use permit. Very stringent requirements are clearly outlined in your application process, but we wanted to provide an idea of what those improvements and areas that are going to be enhanced with this application relative to those standards. One, there'll be an updated traffic flow on the site. As Sally mentioned, there are two accesses today. This building that's over here on what would be the north side of the site, kind of northeast, is the existing residence that will become the office building for the office operations. This is the existing building that will become a maintenance building that exists today. It has two garage overhead doors coming off of this Teller County Road at this location. Then, there is currently a driveway that accesses this upper terrace, and you saw in the photographs that Sally presented where vehicles are parked today. This is a combination of two parcels, as was mentioned and is clear in the annexation petition. The Herschbeck parcel, which was currently acquired by Mr. Baker, and then the McCarrel property to the north. They share a flat terrace area behind the building today. There are two accesses to that that exist today. One is in this location, and then one is through the McCarrel property that accesses it from behind and back down from the north. The proposal for the site plan is to create one unified site plan. We will share one access at this location that would be access for the trucks and the truck driver employee parking up on the upper terrace. This would also be the access for the recycling drop-off center would be located in this location as well. There will be fences and gates that I'll get to a little bit later and describe how that screening and security will be provided. But, one of the things that we are doing with this application is closing the driveway, as Sally mentioned, generally in this location, combining the driveway for the office building and the maintenance building at its current location, for a few parking spaces for the office employees at that location, and access then to the garage doors at the existing building on the lower level. The drop-off circulation that will occur is as an individual wants to come and drop off their recyclables to the site, they will enter at this access point furthest from the existing residences, enter into the site, and they can queue in this large field, flat terrace area, to drop off recyclables. It is a single-stream recycling processing center, so you aren't separating paper and plastic and glass. They're going into one container for processing at the Bestway Recycling Center down in Colorado Springs. The new location for vehicle parking is behind the screen. Again, I'll get to that with the landscape improvements. There are drainage improvements that are anticipated. We have a draft drainage report that will be submitted with our SUP/CUP application that will meet the Woodland Park Drainage Criteria Standards and specifications. There is anticipated and conceptually illustrated on this site, a location for a detention and stormwater quality feature at this location, just to the north of the existing maintenance building, that will take all the stormwater runoff from this upper terrace, discharge it into this detention facility, release it at historic rates. We'll also have a BMP or Best Management Practices for Stormwater Quality integrated into that detention facility prior to that water being released. The screening and buffering, as Sally mentioned, you saw in the photographs that the building sits on the road level, but it also retains about 14 feet of soil behind it, and that creates this upper terrace. And what we are proposing to do is utilize the back of that building and connect the fence and wall system around the site to screen that from the uses along Teller County Road 231, West Street, to buffer that area. Then, the gray area becomes available for landscape enhancements and other improvements. As was mentioned, there will be a water tap for these, and that way will provide irrigation ability to maintain those installed trees and the buffer requirements for the site. But, a key component to that is this wall setback. So, we mentioned, and Sally discussed, this six-foot wall that is proposed to be above the current grade level of the terrace, plus then a six-foot screen wall for a total height of 12 feet from that upper terrace. That wall will then be backfilled to create the berm. So, the wall is being set back from where the current terrace exists to make room for the grading and the landscape improvements that are anticipated and will be illustrated in great detail on the CUP and SUP submittal. There is the container storage area that was mentioned here, again, for empty containers. It's only 2,000 square feet for those, and I believe that's about 10 containers or so at the maximum. that are anticipated and will be illustrated in great detail on the CUP and SUP submittal. There is the container storage area that was mentioned here, again, for empty containers. It's only 2,000 square feet for those, and I believe that's about 10 containers or so at the maximum. It's a very small number, particularly in comparison to the waste management site immediately adjacent to the property to the south. There is roadway improvements that were discussed, and I'll get into that in just a little bit more detail. But there are also, in conjunction with the fencing for screening purposes, there'll also be fencing and gates at the entrance off of County Road 231, as well as video surveillance and motion sensor lighting to be added onto the building to enhance that security effort around the site. One of the issues that Sally mentioned was the area of questionable title. That is this site that is the dispute over the section line, and it's this disputed area here in yellow. As a condition, well, let me, just for information purposes, the dispute stems from a difference of where the section line exists in this particular portion of the county. The subdivision action that was taken to create the single-family lot in this location relative to the legal description for the parcel that exists next to it overlap. And so both have claim to that property because of this dispute of the section line. As a condition of the annexation, my client has agreed to quitclaim that section of land, essentially taking away any dispute and providing that quitclaim deed to the adjacent property owner. Again, that is a condition of our annexation agreement. There was discussion about the contiguity and the legal descriptions, and I'm going to get into some of the other mitigation impacts, particularly as it relates to the traffic and the roadway standards that were discussed. So Jeff Hodgson with LSE Transportation Consultants is in the audience, and he is available for technical questions if there are any. But there was a traffic impact analysis that was prepared for the site, and there was data comparison of Teller County ADT from 2011 and 2012, as well as a tube count that was done on the roadway in June of this year to come up with the projections that were in the study. And so when you look at the site and you look at the surrounding road network, there is an existing amount of traffic that comes to and from the site today. Basically, the employees of Teller County Waste that are utilizing the site. We looked in many different roadway and traffic analysis standards to determine how much traffic is generated by a recycling drop-off center. And I should mention that the recycling drop-off center also has specific hours of operation. It is not open 24 hours a day. It's open during business hours, Monday through Friday, and it's open for the half an hour during the day on Saturday. So it is a limited operation as far as how it's controlled. There will also be an employee of Teller County Waste onsite during those hours of operation. And so as we look for that traffic data on how to compare that, we were able to look through national standards to come up with some information that, again, Jeff can go into greater detail, on what the expectation of those trips would be throughout the community. Obviously, when you have recyclables collecting at your house, you don't go every day to the drop-off center to drop off one newspaper or one can. It collects over time, and so there's this distribution of trips based upon generation that a household would create. But there's also curbside recycling that any of Teller County Waste clients can utilize today. And so the difference of trips is not for the drop-off for Teller County Waste clients and customers, but for those of the community that don't utilize those services today. And so when you factor the population of the city of Woodland Park, as well as the surrounding geographic area, that was the basis for the number of trips and the increase in traffic due to that recycling drop-off operation of, from a low end of about 5.2% of traffic to 8.9% of traffic. So that's a planner's short version of what the traffic report has to say. And again, Jeff Hodgson will be available for more detailed analysis if you'd like some.
Maybe he can answer this, or I just want to clarify. When you're talking about trips, is that in and out is one trip? Or is each way counted as a trip?
Each way.
Each way?
Yes. I'd look just to confirm, but yes, each way. Right, okay. Right. One just point of clarification is that today's trips that were tube-counted, that are existing today, that existing background data includes the operation that exists today, which is approximately seven trucks onsite, or is seven trucks onsite operating today. And so that's, the trip data is, this is the net increase of traffic beyond what the counts that we took in June of 2013. As was also mentioned, there was a road evaluation study prepared by INTECH Engineering. They are a geotechnical consulting firm providing analysis of soil conditions for all types of structural improvements. One of the items that they do is analysis of roadway base. And so they worked with Teller County to get a permit to take 10 borings of the roadway from Mr. Baker's property, approximately at this location, south to its intersection with U.S. Highway 24. The results of that testing indicated that the soils on the site, which is the boring logs for the property, exhibit very good support characteristics. One of the questions that we received from Teller County is, will the road hold the vehicles that are driving on it? Basically, the heavy vehicles, in particular a fully-loaded vehicle. Is that road able to support those standards? And the road evaluation of the boring and the testing that was done of those samples indicate that it is. So then there was an analysis that was completed relative to the traffic projections and the structural capacity of the road, and then the wearing surface of the road. So there's the structural below-ground piece, is the road going to stay where it is? Then there is, we add traffic to it, is the road-wearing surface suitable for the improvement today? And as Sally mentioned, the recommendation for an additional chip seal, the road currently is a chip-seal road, to be placed within, in that section, would add additional road-wearing capacity to the roadway itself, providing necessary improvement for further road conditions and no degradation. So that is the INTECH report that was provided. My apologies, and that our engineer who prepared this isn't available for detailed conversations. He's out of town this week. I did mention to Sally that he'd be available to meet with staff, both of the city and the county, at their convenience if necessary.
Thanks, Tim. Well, I know tonight is focused on annexation, but I think it's important to be reminded of the big picture, the recycling benefits for all of us, what really is the potential community service outcome of this gathering tonight. This slide showcases just some of the benefits that we all will enjoy. There are members in the audience tonight that are here to show council members that recycling is a quality-of-life enhancement that they would like to have close by to where they live and work. Having to spend time driving to divide is not an effective approach for our citizens, especially for a city of 7,500 and growing. During the previous public hearings, I was authorized to enter into the record a number of important statements in support of annexation, from business leaders to nonprofit executives, from retired military to individual Woodland Park citizens. They all remain committed to Teller County Waste's vision and the important long-term recycling benefits to our community. I hope that you all will keep these important voices in mind as you vote tonight. Tim's going to come back up and talk real quickly here about how the recycling services will work. Tim?
So there has been some concerns about how and what is going to be recycled. This is, as I mentioned earlier, this is a single-stream recycling drop-off location, which means it will take cardboard, paper, glass, plastic, and metals, aluminum, tin, steel. It will not take batteries. It will not take dishwashers. It will not take couches. This is for household recyclables, not, you know, car battery disposition. This is a average household recycling operation.
Excuse me. I don't want us to get too far astray on getting into what the benefits of recycling are. I really would like us to stay on the focus of the annexation. And if you want to talk a little bit about zoning, I mean, I'll give you the benefits of recycling, where it fits in the comprehensive plan, but I'd like us to stay focused on information that's really pertinent to the decisions we're making tonight.
Very good. Again, as I've talked about the fencing, security, and operations, about it being monitored, and also will be free of charge. With that, I'll turn it back over to Mike.
Finally, we'd like to have you all be aware of the longstanding, safe, and relentless support that Teller County Waste has had, and extremely positive impact, I might add, to citizens in our community. Now, time tonight doesn't permit me to list all of Teller County Waste's community outreach programs over the years, but I will tell you that Mr. Baker's team has an impressive list of removing waste, and doing so at no cost to the organizers, but a significant financial impact to the business. From charities like Help the Needy, Senior Coalition, the Teller County Regional Animal Shelter, Habitat for Humanity, it goes on and on, from school programs-
And again, Mike, I would ask that you stay very focused on this. I'm going to ask the same thing of the others that speak against this, but I want us to stay focused and not just get into all of the goodness. I can appreciate that, but let's stay focused on facts that will help us make our decisions tonight.
I understand. And Mayor, in all due respect, the fact his reputation, the fact what the business has done is being questioned tonight, so I think it is important that all of us be mindful of just all the good things that he's done.
And I will ask you to keep it succinct.
Understand. So the bottom line is voting for annexation will be a benefit to our citizens and the environment here in our mountain community. And we respectfully request your favorable vote, and thank you for your attention.
Thank you. And any other inputs from this time from the applicant?
Unless you have any questions unless at this time.
At this time, I'll actually open if council has any questions for the staff or the applicant. Yes, Bob?
Will this whole area be paved? The pictures we saw was all-
And we ask both the applicant and Sally to come back to the podium, please.
That whole area, the access roads and everything, were dirt. Will this area be paved now?
Yes, per Woodland Park standards, site improvements all have to be paved. It is gravel today.
The County Road 231, which is a county road, will be chip and sealed.
It is chip and sealed today, and our engineers have indicated that their, the recommendation is for an additional chip and seal. And that's one of the conditions of the annexation agreement for the 17,500.
Just want to make sure-
So the roadway is paved.
You know, we don't think that that road that borders the city, if it's annexed, the city property is going to be paved. That's not what they have planned.
Well, 231 or whatever was that?
Chip and sealed.
Correct. You're talking about onsite.
About inside the site.
Correct.
I think it's an advantage to have it paved instead of all that runoff.
Yes, Carol?
A couple of questions. The DOT parcel that's currently used by Waste Management, will that continue to be used by Waste Management in the same manner?
We assume that it is. We have no control over that. Again, that's M1-zoned in the county.
Okay, thank you. If annexation is not approved, would Teller Waste continue to pursue the recycle center there?
If the annexation isn't approved, there will be a continuation of the lawsuit that is currently pending with Teller County to determine its availability to continue to operate, which we believe that it has the right to do so through its grandfathering on the site at this time. If that is successful, we would consider recycling. It does require another permit through Teller County to go through that land use process with them.
Yes, Bob?
Along those lines, and I was going to wait till I heard both sides, but I think it's pertinent after Carol's question. The last time we discussed this matter, the economics came up, and you said it would be, the business, I don't know the exact words, but it wasn't be as viable if we weren't able to do it. The point was that, you know, it would suffer. So if it's, the point is that you're trying to do recycling, but the recycling's free, you're not making a lot of money other than what you can sell it for down the mountain.
Correct.
So recycling isn't the money generator here.
Bob, I would ask that you ask a question.
Yeah.
Yeah, but get the question rather than making statements, please.
So what is, what is the economic benefit of having spent all this money to buy the extra land and do all this development? You know, what's the difference there? I mean, what is going to be the money generator as opposed to the current status quo condition?
I will do my best to answer that, and Mr. Lewis, who is our attorney, can also address it. Or do you want to take the first crack at it? All right. I guess I got the point. As we discussed at the last council meeting, the recycling operation does not generate significant amounts of revenue. No question about it. It is purely based upon the commodity value of the recyclables at the time of delivery, and that fluctuates. Sometimes they're worth a lot, and sometimes they're not. It really is a commodity, kind of a market, and they get paid by the ton for those materials down at the Bestway Processing Facility down off of Sitten Road in Colorado Springs. The costs do cover, or the value does cover the cost for the operation of the recycling processing center. It's not a loss leader, if you will. It can cover the expenses incurred and add some revenue to the project. Obviously, there's also value in staying close to the core base of the customers that Teller County Waste has, which, as was indicated, is over 60% within Woodland Park itself. And the recyclable component of that is then adding to the recycling that they already do at curbside pickup as well. So again, from an economic standpoint, those two pieces of the recycling component come together for that revenue. As you look at the development expenses, one, currently their water is trucked into the site. There's no reliable water service to the property. And so being able to utilize city water, providing some stability for its employees, also being able to bring office operations in direct relationship to the operational component of it provides for more efficiencies in the business. And so when you look at all of these factors together, to stay in this location, to be part of the city of Woodland Park creates added value beyond just the initial, you know, is it a positive piece on the books to, you know, open a retail store? This isn't that kind of a business. And hopefully that answered your question.
Any other questions from council?
I had two more questions for Sally. Sally, when you mentioned overnight storage of trash, you were talking exclusively about recyclable materials.
I was talking about the trash which had been collected and contained within the back and the compaction of the trucks.
And that's only the recyclable material?
No, no. That is the curbside pickup of the routes with which those trucks travel and then come back to their hub and park for the night. This is a, as I understand it, the compaction of the trash in the back of the trucks is fully contained. There are no leaks. It's totally enclosed within that compaction.
Is that property used for that purpose now?
Yes.
Yes, Ken?
I had a question, Sally, I think, for you. I'm not sure. On the, I haven't had a chance to study the Teller County letter real closely, but what's the method if we want to comply with what the county wants for that road? Is there a way we in the city can make their requirements part of a conditional use permit or part of this process? I mean, do we have any control over that? Can we get the applicant to agree to do that? do we have any control over that? Can we get the applicant to agree to do that? Because I think the county, obviously, it's their road, as Mayor had stated. Can we somehow incorporate that into what we're doing?
It could be incorporated into the conditional use process. However, the applicant has right now some certainty with the chip and seal overlay, and that has not been fully determined to the extent of what Teller County is going to be comfortable with.
But it is possible.
It is possible. Along that same line, I asked the question before, the county has not required the applicant to do chip and seal on that section of County Road 231 previously, has it?
They have questioned the integrity of the road, but there has been no obligation to do so. And I would like to point out that regarding the chip and seal and the county's letter, per their Part II, Chapter 6, Part II of the Teller County Roadway Construction Specifications and Standards, they have an improvements to an existing roadway's design and technical criteria manual. Per Table 6.10, Minimum Roadway Surface Section, it talks about average daily traffic, or the ADT, on the roadway, and what is an appropriate surface material for that roadway. For, so, they have gravel surfaces as suitable for up to 200 ADTs. For up to 1,000 ADT, a single application, three-quarter inch chip and seal is an appropriate application. For 1,000 to 3,500 ADT, a double application of three-quarter chip and seal or an asphalt overlay is, a three-inch asphalt overlay is identified. The, our geotechnical consultant made the recommendation for chip and seal on this roadway because they, because it's currently a chip and seal roadway. They have concerns about an asphalt overlay and the long-term durability of that, given the chip and seal. They also believe that that's a, for, we are on the very low threshold. Our trip generation, based upon the LSE Traffic Report, at 2035, traffic for that roadway is 1,097. So, that's in 2033. Our traffic, plus all the background traffic, is at 1,033. Our traffic today, plus the background traffic, is at 943. So, we're right at that threshold between the chip and seal as it exists, and an additional surface application of some amount, either chip and seal or asphalt. And so, that, their recommendation, NTEC's recommendation, is that the chip and seal application is an appropriate wearing surface for the roadway traffic and vehicles that utilize it.
Yes, Bob, go ahead.
I recognize that your engineer is not here to answer questions.
I apologize for that.
Is the Teller County engineer here, available to answer questions later in the meeting?
Not that I'm aware of.
I was going to ask the same thing. Is anybody from Teller County could speak to their, for example, if we have quite, we have the letter that was dated August the 9th from Cheryl, who's the county administrator, Cheryl Decker. You know, I have a little trouble understanding some of the things there, and I guess I would like to have actually been able to ask the county, you know, person in this hearing, you know, kind of where they stand on this, and so that I could really take that as an input. And so, I guess we'll have to do the best we can without that, but I will say I wish they were here.
Trying to understand. I'm not a-
I am too.
... structural engineer, road engineer, but you know, I'm reading these things. EDLA is listed, report is 24. This results in design SN, structure, whatever SN means. Nobody defines that. Fine, then say it. Structure of 1.85 TCRD, Table 72, lists EDL for this road as, and use at 50 for commercial collector. Therefore, the design SN needs to be recalculated. Are you going to recalculate it?
We received that letter, and yes, that, those calculations are going to be provided to them.
So, that satisfies them, right?
We're going to provide them the information. Whether they're satisfied-
And the R value is indicated on test samples of 60, corresponding to 0.7 structure coverage, you know. Either of the two recommended alternatives provided in the NTEC report, what are the alternatives? I don't know what they are, in the NTEC report.
The NTEC report identifies a chip and seal application or an asphalt overlay application.
And they say that that should be considered, act to chip the white SN. So, what are they asking for here?
Well, it's still a county road, and I mean, it's, they're the ones that's going to have to approve the traffic on that road versus us, because we're not-
Does that affect our decision to make-
Part of us is, I mean, that road is not a part of our actual decision-making process.
But that doesn't affect our decision, right? Shouldn't affect our decision whether to approve or disapprove, does it?
I guess, well, I'll-
Do we have to consider this? I mean, for-
The answer is, in my opinion, we do, but the action that we take tonight, depending upon whether approve or disapprove, or other conditions, or whatever, if it were to be approved the way it sits today, I don't think that they would have any other obligations as it relates to the county.
So, just for clarification.
Please.
County Road 231, in the area that is under discussion, is from the entrance to this property, moving westwards towards the signal light at Highway 24 and Trout Creek Road. Everyone kind of comfortable with that area? That road surface currently is a chip seal product. What NTEC, the geotechnical engineer, has suggested is that to make that road better for the future use, an additional chip seal application of how thick?
Three-eighths.
Three-eighths to three-quarters.
Is adequate to make that road strong enough for the future traffic. The county has said, we believe, based on our road standards that are driven by average daily trips, there needs to be either a chip seal or an overlay. Is that correct?
That's how I read their standards, and I can, again, provide those to you.
Which is what they agreed to do.
So, I, but I think the point of clarification is, did the county say they would be, they would be satisfied with the chip seal or asphalt, or did they require asphalt? We've got to get down to the crux of the issue.
Sally and I sat in the discussion with the county, and there's some interpretation differences between what NTEC did and what, how the county interprets their design standards. And these comments have been provided to NTEC, who's relooking at this, and then should come back with another, either revised analysis, or an argument to say, well, we think we're correct in our calculations. There's some methodology questions here between the county and NTEC that are unresolved right now.
But-
Does that help?
But to that end, as I read the annexation agreement, it's very clear in there as to what the requirements are. And if that moves forward the way it sits tonight, and the county came back and said, we want 36-foot wide, six-foot, six-inch full-depth asphalt roadway, I guess somebody'd have to figure out how to pay for that, but it wouldn't be this applicant.
Yeah, it'd be the city. The city annexed it.
No, it would not be the city. We're not annexing the road. We are not annexing the road if this is approved. That's something that's, and I'll have, I have some questions myself. I want to let the council go ahead and ask, and then I've got a series of questions I need to ask. Yes, Bob?
Having been a pavement engineer early in my career, as far as I'm concerned, the chip seal is just to preserve the surface so that you don't, will get water damage. But my, my concern, and why I wanted to ask the county engineer a bunch of questions, is that they've got so many unpaved roads that have industrial uses, I mean, just around Divide, they, you know, up to their public works center. They're not even meeting their own standards, so I wanted to ask these questions.
Yeah, well, I see about asking questions, but I'd be a little cautious in evaluating how they do other things in the county.
Yeah. Well, unlike, do we have to consider this as part of the-
Record.
Record.
Yes.
Yes. But you will decide, but you will decide whether, how it applies or not, based upon the full set of information that we get tonight. You will decide that.
I want to go back to, although this is fascinating, I want to go back to the issue of the overnight storage of trash in the vehicles. Is there another area that those vehicles could be stored? Do you have another piece of property where that could be stored? And could we consider that as an addendum or an amendment to this annexation agreement that those trucks not be stored there?
Before you answer, let me just, see if, I'm not sure if it's crystal clear. A truck goes out, makes a run, and it doesn't get completely filled up to run it down to Colorado Springs. So, they compact it, they hold the compactor in, and it's parked there overnight so that the next day, it goes out and completes its run, fills up, and then goes down and deposits the trash.
Exactly. I understand that's, that's the process, and that's what is going on right now.
And has been for almost 13 years.
Is there another place to do that?
Mr. Baker looked at that issue in the fall before starting this annexation process. It's my understanding that properties that would be suitably zoned for this would be located in the Cripple Creek area, but I would defer to your planning staff as to whether that's an accurate statement.
We did do an analysis of properties available within Teller County that are zoned M1, and then could also get a Waste-related special use permit for them. They are very limited in their locations, and I believe we calculated it, and I'd have to look back in my file. There is about four parcels, two of which are located here. The property that it currently utilizes, and the Waste Management parcel, which is, well, the C. Dot parcel, excuse me, the property that's owned by C. Dot, Waste Management stores its empty containers on it, is also zoned M1. There's property in Cripple Creek, actually between Cripple Creek and Victor, I believe, that is zoned M1 as well. And so, from an operational standpoint, the question is, we have an employee who has, who's parked, left, left his personal vehicle at the site in order to get in the truck and complete his route. How does that logistically work with another location? We've looked at other sites for this operation, and, and at this point in time, we believe that because the truck is contained, the compactor is pressed, that, that the portion, that partial full container will be emptied in quick cycle the next day relative to the rest of the cycle pickup that occurs.
How often are those trucks left overnight now?
I would have to ask Mr. Baker specifically. Let me get that question answered for you.
From visiting with my client, some trucks do come back from the runs completely empty, and some trucks do not because of the volume of trash generated from the run. So, it's only the ones that don't have a full load and can't go down the hill to the real dump that are parked on site. What I want to point out is, Mrs. Harvey, last time that I was here, I remember I brought the big book. And in that book is a report where Teller County sent an inspector to the site to, on reports of blowing trash, and the inspector came back with a finding that the trash was coming from 24, was not coming from the site. In that entire book, that is the only discussion of a document provided to me from Teller County of a report of trash coming from the site.
I'm going, since we're on this subject, it's a question that I had. I have others, but since I'm hearing that the trash that's compacted in the trucks stays inside the trucks, I'm going to ask the question, does, when trash is put in the trucks and it's compacted, is there any residual trash that's not in the compacted area that sometimes sits in the open area where you dump it in?
No.
And, no? Okay?
No.
That doesn't happen?
What he does on the site, and has done for almost 13 years, the drivers come in the morning, they get in their trucks, they drive off, they do their run, they come back. The trucks either come back empty or partially full. They are not compacted on site. They are compacted before they come. There is no transferring going on.
No, no, I understand that. But I will make a statement. I kind of got on Bob a little bit, but I'm going to make a statement that I followed plenty of garbage trucks that compact, and they compacted trash, and there's trash in the back, and I see it blowing out as I'm going down the road. I'm just asking the question, so, is there any of that that occurs in the trucks that's parked there?
Well-
And I heard an answer of no, but I really want a clarification on that. That it's no, or sometimes there is, or I want, I just want, I want to hear.
I've got two answers for you.
Okay.
One to the question that Mrs. Harvey asked a minute ago, and also to answer your question. To answer Ms. Harvey's question first, three-quarters of the trucks, so there's seven today, are emptied every single day. So, they, they have a complete route, they go down to Colorado Springs. That quarter of the trucks that aren't full will sit overnight and go on a route the next day, and then will go to Colorado Springs to be emptied. So, it's a one overnight with trash compacted in the back of the vehicle prior to hitting out the route the next day. Relative to your question, Mr. Mayor, I believe what you're asking is, there's a big hole in the bottom when the compactor presses in, is there paper or stuff that can get stuck inside of that and hang out in there?
That's exactly what I'm asking.
After the truck comes parked. That's what you're asking.
I am.
So, so, the, and we would be happy to make this a condition of this operation if necessary, but Teller County Waste currently inspects their vehicles at the end of the day. They also, as I mentioned, through their curbside recycling, they have a bin behind the cab where recycling that is placed in a bag on curbside goes up, so the driver comes out of the vehicle, takes out the recycling components out of the truck, and puts it in the recycling bin, and also inspects the back of the truck, and can ensure that that is cleaned up. Because, yes, I can imagine there is a piece of paper now and then that gets stuck on the underside, in, inside that, that truck, you know, back bin area.
Well, I think that's part of the, you know, the concerns as we go through this-
Sure, absolutely.
Is, is the part of trash that might come off of the property. And, and it was the same thing. I'll ask, there was a comment about, I guess there's empty containers that are, will be stored on the property also?
Correct.
And are those washed, or, I mean, how, is there any residual trash that exists inside of those that could end up somewhere else?
So, the containers that'll be stored there are dumpsters for a construction site, or a home improvement site, or other use, exactly identical to the dumpsters that are stored on the site immediately adjacent to Waste Management. 90% or greater of the use for those curbside dumpsters is for construction-related equipment or construction activities, and so it's a dry material. If that they, if they need to be washed, currently all the trucks, as well as any dumpsters, are washed in the, at the car wash in town, and not on site. Vehicles are not washed on site. And, and so, if there is residual material that needs to be cleaned out, Teller County Waste will ensure that. It is not common that that is a problem after a load is dumped, because it's a dry, again, it's the nature of that particular trash versus trash from a restaurant.
Yeah, and what I'm trying to do is just make sure that I understand what we're, you know, what we might be approving, and whether or not, you know, it's something that might be an issue. I want to make sure that I get a full understanding and answers to those questions before we make a decision.
Fair enough.
Yes, Ken?
Well, to kind of follow up on that, I think possibly one of the concerns, if there is a truck that's partially full that's parked there, does it stink? Have you had any complaints? I don't know if Sally can answer that, or someone else. Have there, in 13 years they've been doing this, have there been any complaints about that?
I'm not sure I'm able to answer that question. We have, go ahead.
If the county had complaints about odor, again, it's not in the big book that I brought last time. With that said, it's theoretically possible that Teller County could have brought some type of nuisance suit against the site to control odor. If they have done that, they have not disclosed that to me. Now, I noticed that the opposition's counsel cites a number of case numbers that Teller County has not provided to me in the discovery for the litigation. I would doubt that there is an action for, a nuisance action for odor in those list of cases, but I won't rule it out.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions from, yes, Carol?
Sally, please define again what transfer of trash means, and why this is not what would occur at the site.
A transfer of trash means that the trucks are dumping-
A transfer of trash means that the trucks are dumping the trash into another larger container that would then be hauled off so that it is being handled out of the contained trucks into another dumpster or other truck and then sorted or hauled off. That would be a transfer.
Dave, you were going to ask that Sally bring up one of the...
Yeah, could you go back on your presentation? I'd like to actually see the zoning map, that kind of gave a bigger perspective and I'd like to keep that up when we get public comments so that if there's any residents that come, I'd like to, for them to point out if they wouldn't, if they don't mind, you know, where their property is relative to all this so that I can kind of see that.
Well, that's coming up, if I could ask a question of Mr. Seibert very quickly. And this, because all this goes into the record, I want to make sure that I heard what you said accurately. When you were speaking of hours of operation, I thought I heard you say that on Saturday you'd be open for half an hour?
No.
Is that correct?
Half a day.
No, you're sorry.
Yeah, I had that as a question also about a half hour.
I apologize if I misspoke.
Okay. And Erin has a, Erin has a comment she would like to make at this time.
And also in connection with Councilman Matthews' question about when the issues dealing with the road should be addressed and the response from Sally is those could be done at conditional use permit, my strong recommendation is that the city address those in the annexation agreement.
Okay. Let's see, is that the one I wanted?
I think so.
Yeah, that is the one. Okay. Y'all have, do you, y'all? I think that's my West Virginian coming through. Does council have any other questions at this time? I have a couple. Sally, if you could come back up. When I look at this map, it's kind of a comment and a question, and we're considering the 1-6 contiguity issue. I mean, to me, it looks like a pretty big gap in there. The road goes by, it's down the road, it's not right across the road. If the city property was across the road, I could kind of see that, but it just feels to me that we're really pushing the envelope and what I heard was that that's a decision the council will make as to whether or not that really fits the requirement. And I look at that and I've really looked at it hard and thought a lot and I just scratch my head saying, what are we doing? I mean, I understand the goodness of recycling and everything, but I just don't see that in my mind it meets that requirement, at least in my mind.
The state statutes allow for contiguity to jump roadways. It does not give the council or staff a specific guidance as to exactly how that is interpreted and we believe that this is appropriate to be able to jump that portion of the highway and extend those imaginary lines across to this property.
Because my question would be, how far down the highway could you go? It's not the property that's directly across.
I, and maybe Erin can speak to this, but I know that there are many communities in Colorado that have done what they call flag annexations. DIA was one of the larger flag annexations for the city and county of Denver and, you know, I think it ran along public right of ways to be able to get out there to annex that property. So I believe that there's probably plenty of precedent out there. This is far from a six, seven, eight mile flag annexation.
Yes, Bob?
Quick question before we hear the other side of the argument. What is that donut hole, that huge one right in the middle where that road goes to?
Do you mean these areas?
Yeah.
There's a ranch on the south side of West Street and then there's a cabin that sits up on a hill on the north side.
Interesting. So that's county property surrounded by city?
Correct.
Well, I have a question for Erin again about contiguity. The three criteria that we used to even consider annexation, do they all have to be met specifically?
They do, but council has a great deal of discretion in determining how they're met. And Sally provides a really good answer to the question that Mayor Turley asked, which is that there is no authority that tells you exactly how to do this. And there are a number of cases where the courts have interpreted the statutes as the annexation statutes and whether or not the requirements have been met based on a substantial compliance test as opposed to what would be a strict compliance test.
Okay.
So, you know, one can look at those cases and take from them the fact that courts are going to be very deferential to a local body sitting as a city council making a decision about a very local issue.
Okay. And then a little clarification, because I heard something from Sally and then when I heard the applicant, how many trucks will be staying overnight?
Seven. I'm not Sally.
Up to 12, I believe.
Yeah, because I heard seven and then I heard 12 and I'm trying to get an understanding of what the number is.
The plan is to allow for the applicant growth in his business from the existing seven trucks to up to 12.
Mr. Mayor? May I be called on, sir?
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you. I'm, a few, about 15 minutes ago, you all were struggling with the issue of the county's responsibility for the road versus your responsibility for the road and I wanted to see if I could maybe add some perspective from that and I'll try to stay at the view from 10,000 feet as opposed to getting down to the weeds growing along the side of the road. And I'll be brief.
Okay.
I promise.
Thanks.
Okay. Firstly, let's start with where this property is in terms of county zoning. It's M1. It's been M1 since the late 70s. It's only within the past few years that Teller County has changed its code to require special use for this type of operation. Now, they can't require him to do a special use for everything he's doing because most of everything he's doing is grandfathered. That's background. So let's assume he did want to go through county special use for the one, maybe two things he's doing that aren't grandfathered. I think there's only one. The discussion he would be having with the county is the exact same discussion he's having with you concerning the road. It's special use, so remember, since it's special use, it's already hard zoned for the use. Special use is about having a back and forth discussion with the elected representatives, the members of the community to identify and mitigate the negative impacts from the use that's already allowed by the hard zoning. So, Teller County, in my opinion, is taking the position that because you barely crossed this threshold, Teller County has the right to require a collector in that area. And our view, which I think is more consistent with established planning standards, is you look at the impact and you specifically address the impact that that business is causing and you address it on the margin. So when that business comes in, you have them mitigate their negative impact on the margin and then when the next business comes in, you get a little bit from them and the next business a little bit from them. That's good planning because otherwise, the first one in has to do it all. Well, the economics simply aren't there. Your other alternative is to then wait until the last business comes in and then you make them do it all and that's not fair either. So the view from 10,000 feet is that my client is having a negotiation with you to say, we've been there for 13 years, there are no reports that the road is unsafe, but we know we're going to increase the use of the road a little bit, maybe from our five big trucks if we can expand our business, but we know that the seven big trucks are already factored into the baseline and we know that that road's not unsafe from those seven big trucks that have been going every day for pertinence 13 years. Pardon me, my mouth is dry. So what we're saying is use common sense. We want to pay here and now for the expansion of our business by five trucks and we want to pay here and now for the expansion of our business by allowing people to come and drop off their recyclables and we think this extra lift of chip seal will do that. It will add a little bit more durability to the road and it's not going to make the road anymore. It's not going to make the road more unsafe, it's not going to make, well, I'm getting a little bit ahead of myself there. But just step back and use common sense and ask yourself, is expanding this business in this location going to make that road unsafe? And the answer is, it's not. And so what we're proposing is a fair way to pay right here and now to plan for the future.
And my comment to that would be, it's a county road, you're going to be driving on a county road to get to the property, that's really an issue between you and the county?
That's correct.
I mean, that's the way I look at it. It's an issue between you and the county.
And I agree with that wholeheartedly and, and, and my response to that in addition is, but you, but you do have the ability to say, well, we don't want to make a county road anymore unsafe, so we can require this extra bit, which we're offering to do.
Yeah. Sally, I've got a couple of questions. Property that's in the city, you know, normally property that's in the city, and you can correct me, I'm just making a statement, might not even be accurate, but city property usually borders on city streets?
Yeah, I agree.
And city streets serve that property and therefore we have a role that we play relative to the conditions of the streets, going back to Bob's comment about paving and things for city streets. Is this normal that we, I mean, how unusual is this that we're having a piece of city property that is served exclusively by a county road versus a city street?
Well, it's not that normal, but it is happening just up the road. When Grey Horse Ranch was annexed, the road was not taken into the city at that time and yet the developer was required to, at this, at that time, I believe this was dirt and he was required to pave the section from the edge of the city boundary to the road entering Grey Horse Ranch. And then I was involved in the annexation of the property across the street, a portion of that, and at that time, we annexed in about 2001 and the county did not require us to take the road in. It's not typical, but it has happened.
Okay. And I just want to make sure I'm clear on, I asked about the number of trucks. What's the, refresh me again on the number of trips that are on that road now versus the number of trips that will occur with the change?
I think our expert would be asked to answer that.
Good evening. Jeff Hodgson with LSC Transportation Consultants and I wrote the traffic study. The existing trips on County Road 231, about, about 900 just to the south of the site. So about 900 trips or vehicles per day, both directions of travel. The, what we calculated after you remove, when we talk about the site traffic, after taking out the existing trucks and the existing employees, the net new trips from the additional trash trucks and employees and the recycling is a range of, say, 79 to 133 additional trips per day and that's both directions and that's, and that's total trip generation. Some of those trips will go north, some will go south. So on the roadway itself, on that roadway that currently carries 900 trips, it would be from 47 to 80 additional vehicles, both directions, so.
So that's counting, that's the trips that the vehicles, the trucks and things would make? That doesn't include the trips of people that are bringing recycled?
That includes the recycling, yes.
It does?
Yes.
Please, let's wait, so...
That's, that's including additional, the trash truck trips, which are basically two per day for the trucks that use that, that route, which would be, we're recommending most of them use that route because that doesn't go through the neighborhood unless they're actually serving the, and that includes the recycling trips as well.
That would include the cars from the citizens that are coming to drop off?
Yes.
Okay, just for point of clarification, because there's, I think there's a little confusion here. Remember that the area that we're talking about, this roadway, isn't all of County Road 231, it's from the entrance going towards Highway 24 at Trout Creek Road. You made the statement and I just don't, I want to make sure that council understood it, there's, there are some that when they come out of the facility will turn left and head into town, there's some that will turn right and go towards Highway 24. Those are the numbers you're talking about. You said the counter was just to the south of the entrance.
Correct.
So there, there will be people coming to use the recycle center that are coming from inside of Woodland Park, inside of town. The numbers he's telling you though are the ones that are coming from the other direction. Is that correct?
Right, yes. The 47 to...
It is, it is.
I, I don't know, I, sorry.
Don't let me feed you a line if it's not true, but I just want to make sure.
I'm confused, but here's what I heard, Jeff. I heard that, I mean, today there's existing traffic on the road, that's the background traffic, that includes the current operation that's there today. What I heard is, based on the new recycling center and the additional five trucks with the additional employees that are related to those two improvements, if you will, to the business or expansion of the business, we're looking at somewhere between 40 and 80 new trips a day from that facility.
On, yes.
On 231.
To the south.
Well, no, it's trips per day generated to and from the site and they will either go towards Trout Creek or they'll go into town, but that's the, the new trips that are generated from the site.
Yeah, the total new trips in all directions on all streets are 79 to 133.
Okay, thank you.
In both directions.
Thank you. Well, we're throwing out a bunch of numbers.
Yeah, both directions, several, you know, wherever they decide to come from.
So, so just using averages, somewhere around 50 vehicles are going to head towards Trout Creek and, or trips to and from and 50 are going to be going east into town.
Correct.
And I make that clarification only because the county is asking for improvements from one location to another and off the full stretch of road.
Sure.
And out of the facility in both directions.
Okay, thank you.
I didn't mean to confuse things.
No.
No?
Yes, Carol?
Again, I think this is for Sally. Sally, I kind of want to boil it down to, to the essence. What are the tangible benefits to the city for annexation? Not going to the next step of zoning, but for annexation. You mentioned $1,100 a year in property tax, one-time water tap fees, what else?
And, and with those water and sewer taps, they'll pay their monthly rate every year. There's a little bit of impact fees for transportation, capital fees are always assessed based on those average daily trips as a one-time fee. There's a stormwater capital improvement fee, that's a one-time fee and then there is a monthly fee based on the area of impervious surface.
Would there be any tax, sales tax revenue collected from this at all?
No sales tax. It's, it's a service.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions for Sally or the applicant? I would suggest we take five minutes, a quick five-minute break, come back, everyone please be in your seat at a quarter after nine and we will resume with public comments. Thank you.
...expressed that the treatment of Highway 24 is incorrect. It should be collapsed, which I'll describe later, or not taken into consideration. The city cited no authority for its reasons of liberally viewing this contiguity requirement. However, I will provide authority for the situation and the issue later on. Similarly, my clients hired their own surveyor expert to evaluate this contiguity requirement. His name was Mel March of March Surveying. He was given no notes or other material other than the Platts and the question as to whether or not the contiguity requirement in this matter is met. Now, to quote him directly, "When the issue of contiguity is addressed for annexation purposes, it does seem to be applied randomly when projected across the public roadway." This became even more inconsistent when the boundary on each side of the public roadway is irregular, such as is the case in this annexation proposal. It appears that the definition of contiguous has been used very liberally in this instance. I have a bit of heartburn with how the rules apply for contiguity across Highway 24 and Plat 1. The laws, as I understand them, say that public roads do not matter. When it comes to contiguity, the contiguity should be considered as the road is not there. With this in mind, if the highway did not exist and the skyline south annexation property lines were projected to the center line of the highway, and at the same time the property lines for the southwest valley annexation of Plat 1 were projected center line, they would not touch and therefore would not be contiguous. Now, we have these slides that the city provided, and I was wondering if we can pull up the slide with the area that has the red dotted lines on it. Is that possible for me to do during my...
Please.
All right. Again, this is a complicated matter, and I'm not going to hold myself up here in front of you as an expert in surveying or any kind of plot description. However, I don't think it's hard to see, and I don't think you have to be an expert, to call into question this contiguity requirement. Is it okay if I step away from the lectern, Mayor?
If you want to point something out, but we really need you speaking into the microphone so we have it for the record.
Okay, all right. So what we have in the blue box right here, and the numbers one and three, is the actual subject property. Now, there is no county to the left of that property, sorry, there's no city property to the left of it, to the, you know, on the bottom of it, on the right of it, or immediately above it. It's also not directly across the highway. You can see that the lines go all the way across 24 and then stretch up the highway to reach this little bit of land that's nowhere near the property. Now, the entire reason that the statutes for contiguity were written by the legislature was that it should be part of the city already, or the municipality that is seeking the annexation. This is a far stretch for being part of City of Woodland Park. Now, the statements from the surveyor that my clients hired conform with the concerns expressed by Ms. Decker and the county. Given these facts, there's legitimate doubt as to whether or not the contiguity requirement can be justifiably ascertained. The law in the matter and the authority in the matter states that a resolution of the absolute factual existence of the 1/6th contiguity requirement is mandatory. I can give a legal citation to that case if the council requires. Given that the fundamental requirement for annexations is seriously in question, we ask the board to deny this petition for annexation, or in the alternative, conclusively establish or clearly respond to the questions as to why the city is taking such a liberal interpretation of the law and how the city thinks that this interpretation will hold up in a court of law when my clients decide to bring legal action in the matter. Now, moving on to the issue of trash. In the material submitted for the approval, it is clear that the property is intended to be used as an office and a location for operations of Teller County waste. Section 1(c)(C)(C)(1)(e) of the annexation agreement indicates that the annexor agrees not to transfer trash on the property and that this property will not be considered a transfer station for refuse. Now, the city gave a definition for a refuse transfer station, but I'd like to actually read to you the statutory definition. This is in Section 8.3(c)(c)(1)(e) of the Teller County Land Use Regulations. A waste transfer facility is defined as a facility at which refuse awaiting transportation to a permanent disposal site is transferred from one type of containerized collection receptacle to another or is processed for compaction. Now, Section 8 dot 04 dot 10 of the Woodland Park Municipal Code defines refuse as containers, boxes, and glass. My questions for the city are, will these items not be brought onto the property? And again, how is this not a waste transfer facility if you are bringing refuse to a facility, it's being stored in containers, maybe overnight or maybe not, according to the city, and then transferred to another facility? I'm, I guess, I'm confused as to how they're defining a transfer facility. Now, I'd like to address the issue of recyclables. It's been said today that these facilities will be used for recycling and that they will not be used for trash. When recyclables are submitted to any kind of station, while some people may be submitting them in their clean form, recyclables are food containers, and there is a good chance that everyone will not clean off all of the food from these food containers. Maybe we're not all as clean as the next person and cleans our recyclables when they drop them off, and it's very possible that these things will contain food residue that will be in these containers, will constitute trash, and then violate even more land use regulations that have already been violated, which I'll discuss later. Now, moving on to the issue of setbacks. State law requires that a 200-foot setback is required for these type of operations, and the city has quoted a lesser requirement. However, when a conflict of municipal law and state law exists, state law controls. My question for the city again is, how can the city violate the Colorado laws in this matter when the annexation agreement requires that the annexor follow all state and municipal Next is the issue of property values. The annexation rules require the city to consider the annexation's effect on surrounding residents. This annexation will reduce the value of the nearby homes during one of these countries' most difficult economic periods since the Great Depression. If the annexation is approved, the surrounding landowners, who wish to sell their properties, will face the fact that they must disclose that a trash facility will be built within the required setback regulations, and quite possibly all but the extremely naive homebuyer would ever dream of owning a property directly nearby or next to a trash sorting facility. This complete degradation of the property value would constitute a taking under the laws of eminent domain. Defined as a regulatory taking is when the government regulation leaves no reasonable economically viable use of the property. Residential properties located within setback requirements of a trash facility have no economically viable use, and a court of law would not take much convincing to understand that conclusion. Given these effects, how can the city possibly find that the community of interest element has been met? The city previously stated that the community of interest is basically the contiguity requirement, but it's a different requirement. In the statute, the contiguity requirement is the 1/6th touching requirement. The community interest, the community of interest requirement, is exactly that, is it has to be in the interest of the community. In addition to that, Section 15.8 of the Woodland Park Charter requires that annexations must serve the best interests of the city. If you grant this annexation, not only are you doing more harm than good, but effectively forcing families to consider whether or not they have to move from their homes that they have created lasting memories in. Again, my clients are families that live in this community. They want to keep living here, but if you grant this annexation, you're jeopardizing their homes and their families. Next, I'd like to discuss past violations. Mr. Baker and the petitioners and their respective attorneys have given respectable reasons for their actions. They've said that they're going to create a recycling facility. After questioning my own clients regarding this annexation, if this were any other set of individuals reporting to construct a recycling facility, my clients would have been overjoyed to endorse such a system that would benefit future generations, including their own children. First, my clients doubt the petitioners and his purported legacy of good stewardship and distinguished tenure, because the petitioners have a reputation of violating these land First, starting in 2003, the petitioner received a notice from Teller County of violation of Teller County Land Use Regulations. The notice reads, "This letter is to notify you that the waste transfer facility being operated at 1051 County Road 231 near the City of Woodland Park does not meet minimum requirements of the Teller County Land Use Regulations." Next, a letter from the Teller County dated April 12, 2004, and the agricultural, reads, "In the agricultural zone district where this property is located, owned by the petitioners, the waste transfer facilities and the sale and the storage of building materials are not allowed." Next, April 9, 2004.
I'm going to interrupt you again, just, and to be perfectly candid, the same as I did with the applicant. I really want you to stay focused on the points that will help us make our decision and not stray too far away from that.
I understand, Mr. Mayor. In this annexation agreement, the petitioners have agreed to abide by certain land use regulations. I think it is immediately relevant and clearly relevant of his past violations and his basically lack of credibility in the matter in order to ascertain whether or not he will follow the obligations and the promise that he's making in this annexation agreement.
I'll just ask you to be very succinct.
January 2005, another letter referencing commercial trash and waste dumpster land October 4, 2012, notice violation of the Teller County Land Use Regulations. July 23, 2012, notice of violation of Teller County Land Use Regulations. April 18, 2012, notice of violation of Teller County Land Use Regulations. Lastly, case number 12, CV 269, in the Teller County Courts, which has been referenced already tonight. The action was brought by the Board of County Commissioners and the County of Teller. The allegations are that the petitioners were required to obtain a special use permit from Teller County in order to lawfully use the properties for waste-related uses. The plaintiffs went on to state that neither Mr. Hirschbeck nor Mr. Baker obtained a special use permit for the properties from Teller County. On April 18, 2012, the petitioners were required to comply. The petitioners failed to do so. Petitioners failed to submit applications for the necessary permits or bring the properties into compliance of Teller County Land Use Regulations. As I previously said, the petitioners have lost credibility with my clients. They understand that the city and the county have both made it clear that the future actions regarding this annexation will be closely monitored for compliance with the agreement and the applicable rules, but again, my clients have not seen that from either the city or the county. Over the past 13 years, it has become clear that while the respective local governments enact regulations to help their citizens, they are unable to regulate the petitioners. To further amplify my client's distrust of the petitioners, the purpose and the reasons behind this annexation is quite frankly confusing. In the previous hearing, my client identified another plot of land that is already zoned for this use and is not near any residential areas that would be affected by the smell of trash or the sound of dump trucks driving in and out of the property. However, their suggestion was not taken into serious consideration. If the petitioners truly and honestly were pursuing this annexation only for a location for Teller County waste operations and recycling, they would use other land that would not cause such harm to the citizens of the area he supposedly cares so much about. The only logical reason to pursue this very property is to achieve a dismissal in the court action where he's being sued for violating land use regulations. It is truly ironic that the city is ready to allow the petitioners such liberal interpretations of the contiguity and other regulations while a mountain of land use accusation violations have been brought against him before and during this annexation process. My question to the city is, how can you reach the community of interest requirement for annexations when the city has reason to believe that the only reason this annexation is being pursued is to achieve a get-out-of-law lawsuit free card? How is it that the community's best interest is to allow an individual to break the laws and then avoid justice by circumventing the legal process with this annexation? Mr. Baker's attorney has clearly said that he intends to file a motion to dismiss the lawsuit if the annexation passes. If you grant this annexation, you'll be interfering with justice...
With all due respect, Mr. Rossi, our code and state law allows anyone who wants to petition for annexation and meets the requirements to annex. Their intentions, their motives are not appropriate to be talked about at this public hearing. And so I would ask, you know, I think the mayor has already asked for that irrelevant information to be limited and has given you a little more latitude probably than, certainly than he gave the applicant, but motives and intent aren't applicable, they're not relevant, and they're not appropriate to be discussed here.
I understand. I'll move on to the motives and the intent of the annexation statutes, as those are clearly relevant. In historical context, when annexation laws surfaced in this country, the purpose was to control growth. Rapid growth stresses roads, schools, and other infrastructure. Fast-growing cities changed so rapidly that people felt out of place or that familiar historical sites would be likely to disappear forever. Cities with slow growth or no growth at all felt stagnant, and people worried that their children would be forced to live somewhere else in the case of an economic downturn. Annexation laws were adopted so that cities could control their growth by limiting the number of building permits, downzoning to limit development, or otherwise prevent growth. While slow growth has the least support from politically powerful interests, it has the greatest support from the citizens. In the Colorado revised statutes, the legislative declaration for annexations is that the General Assembly declare that the policies and procedures are necessary and desirable for an orderly growth of urban communities in the state of Colorado. The General Assembly further declared that it is the purpose of annexations to simplify governmental structure in urban areas and reduce friction among contiguous or neighboring The city and the petition, sorry, and the applicants have not provided that these motives for the annexation statutes are being sought or would even be achieved. There is no economic value other than ending this lawsuit. The annexation, for reasons previously explained, lacks the 1/6th contiguity requirement. The community of interest element does not exist, given the reduction in property values this annexation will have in an already depressed residential market. This annexation is not in the best interest of the city, as required by the city's own Municipal Code Charter, Section 15.8. This trash facility is in violation of the zoning and land use regulations, as it in fact is a trash facility for refuse, as I've previously provided the definitions to both those terms. Please don't allow this trash facility to be built next to these families for no other reason to end yet another lawsuit against Mr. Baker. Thank you.
Other speakers? Please state your name, address.
My name is Don McCarroll. I live with my wife at 350 Ranch Drive, which is about a quarter of a mile down below these properties in question. I also work at 1050 County Road 231 and own the rental house at 1,000 Southwest Street, County Road 231 with my wife. I'm very familiar with this area in question. I've been in this county for 40 years, lived here in Woodland Park for almost 30 of those Like I said, I'm very familiar with this stretch of road. For most of that 40 years that I've lived around here, this has been M1 property. Exactly when the zoning happened, I do not know, but there was a trash transfer station at the end of this. There was a concrete plant just down the hill from the trash transfer, and then there was the auto shop that has been my welding shop for the last nine years. All of this has been going on for a long time. All of this was going on before the subdivision of Sunny Slope Apers was ever subdivided. The people that are so opposed to all of this built their homes down the road, 100 yards down the hill from active trash transfer stations and active concrete batch plants. I honestly do not understand why, if you have such strong feelings about all this, you built your house with these activities just up the hill from you. I've also, I would argue, the noncompliance of Jay Baker in any of his issues with the county. I have worked with him on trying to comply with everything that came since he started doing his trash operations, from fencing to dealing with leaks to dealing with whatever was a complaint. Him and I together and his crews have always tried to deal with all the issues, trying to make sure that there was nothing else to complain about, but there's always something else to complain about. I've heard the complaints about noise and odors. I live in this neighborhood. When I'm sitting out on my deck at 6 o'clock in the morning, I don't hear trucks start up up in Jay's yard. I hear highway noise. The highway noise far outweighs the noise coming from some trucks starting up and idling for a few minutes to warm up and build air for their brake systems. Odors, I'm closer than anybody in the neighborhood. I'm in the welding shop in front of this place, and I don't have odors from these trash trucks. The renters in my house have never complained about odors from the trash trucks. If I'm in the yard and there's a trash truck back there and have to get in it, how could I say that it doesn't stink? But it's not putting odors throughout the neighborhood. It's just not. I guess that's all I have. I think that this is a good thing for the city, a good thing for the community, and the accusations that are being made here, I think, are unfounded, and I have no idea what their real agenda is.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
My name is Diane Allen. I'm at 1098 Main Street, and... So just falling off the map, I'm just, three points I'd like to cover very quickly. First of all, Mr. McCarroll, who just spoke, is one of the petitioners, and he stands to gain the most out of this because he is selling that property, Mr. Baker, for I believe it's around $80,000. And to answer his question, so you know, that we were told by the real estate agent that sold us the lot that all that M1 industrial was going away, and waste management did go away, but unfortunately, the other properties didn't. So that's why we built on that property. Secondly, I just want to ask a question, and that is, if I were to petition the city to annex my property, and then I sold it prior to the annexation hearing, would my petition still be valid, or would that get dropped?
We're not going to answer that. We're just taking input from you at this point.
Okay, well, I think it's valid because on ordinance number 1188 that we're talking about tonight, Series 2013, it states the petition has been submitted by Carl Hirschbeck. That's now owned by Jay Baker. Carl Hirschbeck is not in the picture at all, any shape or form, and yet, his name is on the agenda that says it's being requested by him, Item B. And also, you know, in the annexation report, so how does that affect this annexation hearing? I'm just curious. And then lastly, I'd like to clarify and maybe help you out with the county road situation. I met with Cheryl Decker yesterday, yeah, yesterday, gosh, seems like a year ago, and I threw the records, the Open Records Act. I was able to get information, and I'm really grateful that Sally was forthcoming because I did ask her why this wasn't included in the packet to start with. And however, I also asked her yesterday in an email that, for the estimate that the county gave her, because there was a price put out on the table yesterday, and I would imagine you guys would like to know what that price is, because it could affect this hearing. Could, I don't even know if the applicant is aware of that price. So how do we do that? Should Sally tell you, or, I mean, I can tell you, but I think it should come from her. She was in the meeting.
We're in a receiving mode, so...
You're in a receiving mode? Okay, that price tag for material only, I was told, was $70,000.
For what?
This is to improve the road per the county standards.
Not the chip seal with the...
Well, I don't know what that includes. It sounds like it includes, you know, from what the letter states, there's a number of other things that it would include, but I just think that amount should be given. So like I said, I had no idea if even the applicant was aware of that. And then lastly, I have, in the case this is annexed, I think, were you all given this top 10 list of demands?
I have it right here.
Oh, okay. Would you like to hand that out, please?
Certainly.
Thank you.
We both want to go ahead and read it.
Uh-huh. What, if this property is annexed, the neighbors have put together their top 10. We actually have 30, but a lot of them can be addressed by the CUP SUP hearing, and so we left those out. But upfront, we would like, again, the property values will not be reduced, and that would be measured by the open market appraisal and not the tax appraisal. We would like that they cannot begin operating in the City of Woodland Park in any capacity until that site is completed and final inspections awarded. That would include the landscaping, the screening, the fencing, the public and private improvement requirements.
Diane, I am going to limit you to about 15 more seconds so that we have opportunity for everyone to speak.
Okay, do you want to... Okay, water will not, there's the issue with water, there's the issue with refuse being stored, pollution, and we would really like the escrow account not to be a percentage, but an amount. And, you know, the other big one is just about violations that we need to know who are we to go to? You know, we've had the past history. We want to know, okay, if this does get annexed, who do we go to? You know, Sally, I think jokingly had said, told us that, you know, come to her, but I don't think she really wants that responsibility. So we need to know how that's going to be enforced. And then just lastly, again, all the county road improvements. Again, we don't want him to be able to operate until those county road improvements are done also.
Okay.
Thank you very much for your time.
I live at 1063 Main Street, across from the Allens, pretty close to the subject property. And as I understand it, this hearing is about an annexation, annexing this property. However, most of the discussion that I've heard tonight, just sitting here, has been about trash and recycling and TCW business operations. So it feels like we've gotten off track to me. I agree with Mayor Turley that this annexation seems to be pushing the envelope. DIA, which Mr. Smith mentioned, is not a privately-owned business, I would assume. Is that correct? I would imagine it's a government business. I can't imagine it's going to go out of business tomorrow. So annexing that, you wouldn't have to worry about that, but by annexing this, kind of taking this stretch and annexing this property, there's no promise that this recycling center that we've been talking about is going to be there 30 days after the property's annexed. But yet, we've had all this discussion about the actual business is going to be there. He could choose to leave and go anywhere he wants, anytime he wants, or go out of business. And essentially, what the city would be left with is this oddly annexed property that was reached out and grabbed, that the only access is county road. That seems kind of odd to me. So what's the, what's the purpose of that? What is the community benefit if the business is gone? If the business is gone, what's there? If the business is gone, what's there? And that business can operate where it's at, it can increase and put a recycling center in right where it's at and not move by going through the county. So what's the purpose of doing this odd annexation for the city? And if you think about it, I mean, in my mind, this, this stretch, this pushing the envelope, is not in the spirit of the law. There's lots of things that are legal, but just because they're legal doesn't mean it was done within the spirit of the law. When it's done outside the spirit of the law, that's what we call loopholes, right? And where taxes are concerned, Congress is constantly having to tighten up all those loopholes, aren't they? Because people are doing stuff that's legal, but it wasn't meant to be, it wasn't the spirit of the law, it wasn't the way the law was really written, it wasn't why it was written. So I think grabbing this property like you're considering doing, I just don't see how it's in, within the spirit of the law. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And, and I will just add one comment. While, you know, the discussions did go into use, that's because there, we're also, we're addressing tonight several ordinances that include annexation as well as zoning, so that's a reason it went into the other discussions, just for the record.
My name's Gary Allen. My wife's already spoke, you already saw where we are on the map. We are downhill directly from the disputed site. A lot of things have already been discussed about refuse. According to your definitions, includes cardboard, glass and plastics. Your ordinances say that you, you should not do anything that interrupts ongoing legal disputes, which this is. And again, of course, the road questions. I'll try to jump, jump down to a couple of things that are probably the most important to me, and I have said this and I've asked for this, and nothing has been done as, as far as a study, is what about the environmental concerns for our wells? We are directly downhill and nothing has been done to address this situation. Not one thing. And I've asked this since the very first meeting in May, when we, or May or late April, whatever it was, with, with Sally. And nothing has been required of these people to do anything to check what that could be. Yeah, you can do a little bit of environmental study here, but gee whiz, if they have to go through all this stuff for a ski slope to get environmental study, we should be at least somehow, you know, recognized and some kind of a study should be done that, yeah, this is not going to affect our wells, not going to affect our pets that are outside in our yards whenever the rain comes down there, like we've been having the last month or so. So, I think this is still, environmental issue is still a big thing. And of course, this goes along with property values going down, everything else. The question came up earlier talking about, well, the, the trash is squeezed and there's nothing left. I guarantee you, you take a sponge, you wet it up good, you squeeze it good, you hang it on a clothespin, there's going to be more come out of it for quite a while yet. These containers, I, I would like to see our opposition here to lay underneath a trash truck and sleep underneath a trash truck seven nights a week and say, oh, I'm not worried about anything dripping on me? I don't believe so. I don't believe so. Also, the state, we did talk to someone in the state, however, there is a dispute as to who, what the jurisdiction is, but the person we talked to said, yep, a truck with trash in it, even if it's only parking at a facility, it is transferring trash. And I will continue to fight that. If you annex it, we'll try to come through the state, whatever, because they're still within 200 feet and it is a transfer station. Try to skip to the last thing here, okay. Again, of course, I realize this is what attorneys are for, but some stuff is being thrown around that's not true. My wife is accused of coercing and lying to people to get them to sign the petition that we sent in. I don't think she's too big of a brute, I don't know whether, how I would feel too scared about her. Also, the fact that, oh, Sally Riley was the one that put on the notices on the side of the mailboxes out of kindness for her heart so the community would know. No, it was part of our group that did that, so the community would know. First of all, we had was a little sign that essentially got bigger and that was, at least brought a little bit of attention to it. And of course, the big book of nothing, as you will hear again, I'm sure, tonight, if they weren't so free to that big book of nothing, they would not be petitioning you to be part of the city because they would not be afraid of that lawsuit from the county. Thank you.
My name is Dick Lias. I live at 1679 County Road 21. Been a resident up here for 32 years. My background is actually 30 years in construction, did power plant work for about 13 years and then I moved here and got more into commercial and high-rise type work, so I know what construction is and know what it is to work with municipalities. And I, I know that you people here in Woodland Park and working with Jay Baker on, on building this facility, assuming it's, gets annexed, it's going to be done and done right. I don't know why there's such a big concern about that, but I have a few little items here. This concern about property values and wells and traffic and these concerns, you know, I've taken this bypass, goes right through this for 32 years. I'm a rancher now, been a rancher up here for 30 years. I cut across right where they're talking about and I have for 30 some years and it's already been brought up that there's been a M1 facility there, the transfer station, the muffler shop, Jay's operation, and these people that are complaining, they're all newcomers. I, I just don't understand. I, my ranch down on Cristola Road, when I bought it, I knew what I was getting into, which was a sewage lagoons were east of me for seven, eight years. I didn't like that, but the growth actually helped me. Bonds got too damn big and you guys built bond out in 67, that was one plus. I didn't like Walmart coming in right next door to me, contiguous to my property, in Safeway, but you know, it's, it's growth and you gotta, you gotta live with growth and if it's done right, I, I think that's, that's the main thing, and I don't have any question that, I know you people will make sure that Jay's agreement is fulfilled. And I've known Jay for 18, 19 years, done a lot of work with him, done a lot of business transactions. He's very honorable, a good man to his word, good Christian values. I think there's also some, really some misconceptions out there and, and I really feel like wanting to have, improve that facility, when Jay started, put his facility in, it was a great improvement over the transfer stations there. I remember a lot of times I'd drive by to go out and check cattle out in Divide, I couldn't get in there because that transfer station there, back in that semi into that big old dump facility they had. There's a huge improvement they've made already and with the new facility, it's going to get even better. I mean, the, the property values, I should have thought about that, you know, when, when they moved there, because it's been there for 30 some years. But I really think it's a, having a good transfer station here is real important to the community. A lot of people, I don't think will want to spend four or five bucks in gas to drive up to, to Divide. I think it's to be a real asset, you know, the transfer stations are darn important in our country anymore and we already have a, not a very good record on being, what, 47th in, as far as being a, a state that really pushes the recycling and a green state. I think we ought to work on that. This is a good place to start, but thank you for your time.
Jay Turner, and I live on County Road 231, and I'm the one that's directly by the trash site. I just wanted to straighten up the timeline here just a little bit. We keep being accused of being grandfathered in. This, this situation, I was there for eight months before the sign went up in the driveway that said gladly transf, now gladly transferring, no, gladly now receiving trash. I had been there eight months before that. When we moved there, we had three properties to our west, the Gitlin property, the Bryce Lynn property and Mr. Carpenter. All three of those homes were zoned residential. And the Bryce Lynn property was residential because it was agriculture with a home on it and in the county that's deemed as residential. So, this deal about what was going on one more block over was not in place. At that time, it was a concrete and landscaping business. And it, it has now grown at a time whenever, under the court orders from the, from the court in 2005, should not have been transferring trash. Should not have had trash on the property. That's all I really have to say about that, but that should clarify the grandfathering clause that you keep hearing all the time. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Can I clarify one thing, one minute?
Yes, you may.
Gary Allen again. Just want to clarify, we moved there in 1996. At that time, the plans were already in motion for the waste management facility to move out, and I'll admit, I probably wouldn't have bought it if I thought, bought our property if I thought they were going to stay there. But at that time, Teller County Waste was not in existence, was not anywhere in business there, so we had no reason, we did not move there and build after the fact. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else like to comment at this time? And, and we're not answering your questions. I mean, we're here, to be candid, to listen from, to hear from you. If you ask questions that, that make us think about things, we'll take that under advisement. But we're not here to, to really do that, to be candid. Okay? And I will close the public hearing at this time, and I will give an opportunity for any rebuttal from the applicant.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll try and be brief, addressing comments and issues that were raised during the public comment, try to answer any questions. As was initially, and I'm going to just go by my notes that I took to try and address those, so pardon me if it seems a little disjointed, but I am trying to address them as, as they came. We're going to contiguity issues associated with the annexation petition. As long as we're talking about timelines, I've done planning work for 20 years and I've seen some very odd annexation petitions. And this is in line with some that are more on the odd side than on the most normal side, but have I seen stranger ones? Absolutely. The decision before you today is whether or not this meets the contiguity requirements by statute. You've heard from counsel that, that is up to your interpretation. If you take the analysis that you, if you remove the right-of-way and squish it together, it's not there, well, if we're taking out right-of-way, wouldn't we take it all out and do that analysis and squish it all together? It, it seems to be a question with, with an answer that lies with you and with no one else. And that, and therefore, the question becomes, we believe through the, through the projection of a, of a city limit line that directly faces the property, we receive contiguity for annexation plat number one. And that's our request today. Annexation plat two gains contiguity from annexation plat number one. It's a sequenced annexation plat, common in many, many jurisdictions, you've probably had them yourself. We do believe that contiguity is available. Some of the definitions of transfer stations were, were discussed as well as a setback. The 200-foot setback that is referred to in state statutes is for a transfer station. The definition that was provided to you was from a transfer station definition in the Teller County standards. That was adopted in 2008. Teller County Waste, we had a lawsuit that was brought forth and settled and judge ordered in 2005 that says you can't be a transfer station. We're here to say that we don't operate a transfer station because the judge has already told us we can't, and so we don't. And so, under that, that condition, a 200-foot setback is only in place for transfer stations, landfills, hazardous material, disposal sites, et cetera. There, there is discussion about the, the selling of the property and change of the title, and I'm not an attorney, I will give you my interpretation of how that works from a planning perspective. An annexation petition represents a piece of land. It is a known parcel. We've disclosed to staff and I believe to the council that we had a contract purchase agreement to acquire that parcel. And the, so the annexation petition, at the time it was submitted, is valid for that piece of land. The property was acquired by Mr. Baker, knowing that that petition was valid and continuing that petition to move forward. And I can ask Mr. Lewis to clarify that additionally. There was, I, I am aware that there was a meeting that took place between city staff, as Mr. Alsbach indicated, and county staff, that there was some discussion about, you know, what the county thinks this improvement number is, what our engineer believes is appropriate. We believe, as Mr. Lewis stated previously, that we are providing fair contribution to a roadway that is in structurally sound, that provides additional support for the wearing surface, which is the concern of the county, and, and that, that both our traffic engineer and our geotechnical engineer identifies. There was discussion about the environmental concerns for the well. We did conduct, and I believe has been provided, a phase one environmental analysis on the property. It did not specifically address anything with wells in the surrounding properties. It, it looked at what's happening on the subject parcel for this annexation. Are there visible concerns? Are there issues associated with signs that indicate contamination, records in the state, records locally? Are there, is there staining in, in the, the ground surrounding it, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera? The, the recommendations in this report indicate that there are no serious indications. They had questions about a floor drain in the existing shop and where it discharges to. That was their, their most significant concern. One of the things that annexation will bring is, as we discussed, improvements to the site, hard surfacing, paving of the property, containment of, of stormwater runoff, which isn't contained today. You, you're right, it isn't. It runs off the gravel in parking lots and areas and, and discharges onto the street. That is going to be developed to meet your standards, the standards that the city of Woodland Park has today, and make sure that that, that moves forward in the future. Let's see. Regarding the 10 items that were presented, 10, top 10 list of demands if annexed as presented tonight, I'll speak briefly on each one of those and I'd be happy to answer any questions about my comments. One was about property values not being reduced. Obviously, property values have lots of factors, one of which is what's surrounding them, but it's also, well, how big is the home? What's its condition at the time? What's its condition when you go to sell it? It's a very dynamic situation and, and it is impossible to, to guarantee that there isn't fluctuations. Who would have thought in 2005, we would have property value reductions that we saw today and hopefully rebounding in this, in this situation, that, that couldn't be factored into, to an analysis of this nature? Regarding use of the site, applications that move forward and as far as improvements are concerned, we've tried our best to address that within the annexation report, we, or the annexation agreement, excuse me. We, or the annexation agreement, excuse me. The operation of the facility will remain as is for a period of time. We've discussed additional timelines at the CUP-SUP period, no increased expansion of work, and that there are specific timelines associated with that SUP-CUP process. The escrow accounts, I believe, Sally, is for 100% plus an overage amount of it. So their cost estimate is prepared for all the public and private improvements for the property, and a letter of credit or other acceptable financial assurances are placed with the city for over 100%. Not an actual amount, it's an estimate plus sum. So it's more than what's necessary to complete the improvements. And again, another item that was discussed was the water running off from the streets. As I mentioned earlier, we will meet your drainage criteria standards. We will have a detention facility that will have, our intention at least conceptually is to have a sand-bottomed basin detention facility, which will add water quality, which will dramatically increase the cleanliness, and also slow the discharge off the site as it exists today. It will be an improvement. Pollution of any kind. That's a pretty open-ended statement. I understand their concerns. We have indicated before that we will, and are committed to keeping the site clean. We believe our fences will assist in that, but we will make sure that we have personnel that will police the area daily to ensure that there is no blowing refuse. We are, you know, again, you've heard testimony about odors, and I can't personally attest to those. I've been on the site when trash trucks are there. I haven't smelled anything, but doesn't mean that I live there. And no, I haven't slept under a trash truck for seven days either. So I can attest to those things. But I do attest to the fact that Mr. Baker, with this annexation, understands the obligations that he's getting into at the City of Woodland Park. He's asking for certainty. He's asking for municipal services. He's asking to be a good, quality business within Woodland Park. And then violations. You know how to handle violations. You do it all the time. Your staff addresses those. I will assume that you have faith in your staff, and your staff will address them in a timely and efficient manner. And then regarding the road improvements. It's stated in the annexation agreement, we have a $17,500 commitment, plus 10% of that for escrow account, with then an obligation to have the road improved by August 1st of next year, allowing construction season, and then also, or that money, we lose 10% plus what we would have spent on the roadway improvement. So, and then there was some discussion about what's the value to you? I would submit that the fact that you have competing trash collection services within this community is a huge asset, allows competition within a market. It is also important to understand that our client is a good citizen today of Woodland Park, wants to continue to be that good citizen, and by being part of Woodland Park, having the municipal services available to him, providing the service of the recycling processing center, and allowing him to establish a solid location that is mitigated and addresses the concerns, is what we ask for today. Be happy to answer any questions you might have at this time. I know Mr. Lewis would also like to make some comments as well.
Let's hear Mr. Lewis's comments, and then we'll see if we have a couple of questions for y'all.
Mr. Mayor, members of city council. Again, let's step back and get the view from 10,000, let's step back and get the view from 10,000 feet. The view from 10,000 feet, this property is hard-zoned M1. It's been hard-zoned M1 since the late 1970s. The people who moved there moved to the M1. Nobody, despite the admonition in the Colorado-approved real estate contract that you need to consult an attorney, I'm kind of like the Maytag repairman, I'm very lonely. Because nobody, Mr. and Mrs. John Q. Public, holding a real estate contract for a residential property, ever calls me, the real estate and land use expert, to say, "What am I getting into when I buy this property? This is my dream home. This is my dream location." Am I going to have that frustrated because I happen to be located to the most intensive zoning classification on the books, the M1? Call me, I'll tell you. So why are they fighting so hard when it's zoned M1 and is now a special use in Teller County? If it was a special use, if it's really a special use, if they really want to do the special use for the purposes with which it's intended, they will have a rational dialogue with us, identifying the negative impacts and how to mitigate them. But they are not. They are trying to shut this business down. That was discussed the last time we were in front of city council. I actually seem to recall one of the city council members stating on the record, yeah, something along the lines of, "Teller County is trying to shut this business down." That's what they're trying to do. They're not trying to mitigate the negative impacts to make it work. Now, let's talk about property values. I will bet you that if you look at property values for these residential properties next to an M1, been M1 since the late 1970s, that these property values next to an unregulated M1, mind you, see, we're trying to get a regulated, we're trying to get a regulated land use here, and we're actually trying to get a regulated land use that is less intense than an M1. I will bet you that if you look at the assessors' records, that the fair market value, because by statute, assessors must try to put a fair market value on property, that with living next to an unregulated M1, their property values went up and up and up and up. They came down when the Great Recession hit. So taking that hypothesis, now, we're going to put a less intense land use, and we're going to regulate it with screening, with connection to city sewer, et cetera, et cetera. I won't bore you with the details. Now we're going to have a regulated land use, and I'll bet you, when we get back to equilibrium in the real estate market, their values are going to go up and up and up and up. Which is why Colorado case law says, when you're in a land use action, mere lay opinion about property values is not admissible. However, we're not in a land use action, we're in a legislative action today, which now leads me to the contiguity requirement. Learned counsel here gave you a quote. I agree with the quote. I don't need the citation, I can find it myself. What he didn't tell you is that there's an almost absence of case law. Why is that? Because you're sitting legislatively, and all you need is a rational basis. You don't need beyond a reasonable doubt. You don't need preponderance of the evidence. You don't need clear and convincing. You just need to have a rational basis on the record, and a court is not going to disturb your exercise of discretion. You have very skilled legal counsel and professional planners. Would this item be in front of you today if they thought for a moment that it did not meet the statutory standards? Now, let's go to my next comment. Who's going to sue you? Now, they can't. They don't live in the City of Woodland Park. They have no standing. Only one that can sue you is Teller County. Or your own voters could bring a referendum to overturn your decision. But you're not getting sued by these good folks. And you're sure not getting sued by these good folks on a takings claim. And I am outraged that a member of my profession would try to bully the elected representatives of the people on that issue. Transfer facility, they're just flat wrong. We're not claiming grandfathering in the lawsuit on the transfer facility. As Mr. Seibert pointed out, that was litigated way back when Mr. Baker lost, and he learned his lesson, and he's in compliance, and Teller County's not coming after him on that. If they are, they sure didn't use the phrase "transfer facility" in that complaint.
Unless you have any questions for me, I'm finished.
Okay. So at this point, I will see if counsel has any questions for Sally, applicant, really anybody that you have questions for, we can go for that. Yes, Bob?
Well, one of the big issues that was presented last time and tonight, by their lawyer, was the listing of all of these cases, or complaints by Teller County, letters saying you're non-compliant or whatever. For me, one of the benefits of our legal system is that you have recourse to the courts, and you solve things quickly. You don't let them drag on forever and ever and ever. And so, they were listing all of these old, old cases, they should have been resolved years ago in due process, I mean, in our right to have resolutions, timely resolutions of issues. And so, that was my concern, is how many of that list of complaints were in fact resolved and no longer should be on the list as standing concerns that Baker still is violating things from, you know, years past? So could you answer that question?
I can. Firstly, let me state, this is the first time that I've had the privilege of representing Teller County Waste. The one case that I am aware of in the past is the 2004-2005 litigation, where the court put Mr. Baker under an order to stop the transfer station. He did. I'm not aware of any other cases that Teller County has brought against Mr. Baker. The first time I learned, there may have been other cases against Mr. Baker with specific case numbers, would be the information that I received tonight. I'm going to look that up in just a moment, to see if there are other cases. In the discovery that Teller County provided to me, there are email discussions, and I'm glad Teller County provided that to me, I appreciate their candor, where they were looking to see if they could get back into that 2004 order and somehow use that to shut down Mr. Baker today, and they couldn't find it. So I'm making the assumption that if they were trying to go back as far as 2004-2005 timeframe to shut him down, that there aren't other outstanding cases and orders that they can use to try and shut him down. So I'm going to follow up on these cases because I need to know that for the upcoming litigation, whether it continues or not. But to answer your question, I don't personally have knowledge. Mr. Seibert might.
And before we move on, our city council has a question for you.
Mr. Lewis, would you please address the question that was raised about the sale of the property and how that may affect the proceedings?
Well, you know, it's, as you know, I'm not an active practitioner in front of the City of Woodland Park. I tend to practice down the road. So I'm just going to speak from my knowledge of El Paso County, which is, we don't require you to be an owner in order to process a land use application. You just have to have the consent of the property owner. So Mr. Hirschberger, Hirschbeck, obviously signed off and gave permission for Mr. Baker to process this application, when now Mr. Baker is the owner. So it seems counterintuitive to me that the fact that Mr. Baker owns the whole thing should be a factor to send him back to square one. It's just the opposite. If you don't own the property, that's when you need the property owner's signature in order to process a land use application.
And I understand that, but I think the question was phrased a little bit differently, and I think the issue really is, does the change of property midstream, once the petition has been filed, does the change of ownership affect the proceedings?
I just don't see how it could, because Mr. Hirschberger has no interest anymore. You're going to have the signature on the annexation agreement of the person who owns the property. I assume that if the annexation is approved tonight, that Mr. Baker will proceed to acquire ownership of the other property. And so you all will want to make sure that when the development agreement is signed, that you have the signature of everybody on that document. So I just don't see how it could have any impact on this. And the other thing I'd kind of like to point out is, well, gosh, if that could be a factor in sending him back to square one, then what's good for the goose is good for the gander. And so Teller County needs to dismiss Mr. Hirschbeck from that lawsuit. And they haven't done that yet, which I think is another degree of the animosity, indication of the degree of animosity that Teller, thank you.
Yeah, we need to stay focused on.
Right.
But for us, would the ordinance wording need to be changed now, since Mr. Hirschbeck is no longer an owner?
No, because Mr. Hirschbeck was a petitioner. So I think the form of the ordinance is fine.
Okay.
And I should just add for counsel, that I am not aware of a case that pertains to the issue that was raised about the petitioner, original petitioner not being a petitioner at this point in the proceeding. And I think that Mr. Seibert's response is compelling, that what we're really talking about is annexation of a piece of property. This is really a proceeding about a piece of property and not who owns it.
Questions?
Yeah, I got something, it's really a high-level question here, but he mentioned it, and so, and he mentioned, well, he mentioned his name, but the fact that Teller County was trying to put Mr. Baker out of business. What's the motivation for Teller County to do that? Because, as I understand it, he's coming to us, some suggested, to circumvent having to work with the county.
I'm just going to chime in. When that statement was made, I was kind of uncomfortable with it, and now I'm uncomfortable with taking it even to another level. So I just don't think it's pertinent, to be candid. I just don't think it's a part of our decision-making.
We're being asked to make a decision based on the fact that if he can't somehow comply with Teller County, they're coming to us in order to circumvent.
Well, I'm just going to say, you know, as I kind of go through the process, and we'll do deliberations in a few minutes, but I'll be candid. I mean, what Teller County does is what Teller County does. I'm comfortable with what we will do if this occurs, and what we do for our code enforcement, and how we proceed with it. I mean, I'm not going to speak to the county, I'm going to speak to what we do in Woodland Park, and what we can do to hold people accountable. So that's just my take on it.
I think I would add, I think I would add that, you know, we have an applicant before us who has come to the city, who has asked for annexation. There are certain requirements and certain items that we have to take under consideration. Nowhere on that list is anything that has to do with the county or anything that's going on. So to me, none of that, at this point, is relevant.
Thank you very much. Then at this point, we have any, let's do a little deliberation, a little discussion about it amongst ourselves, as to what we think. Yes, Eric?
Yeah, I do have a question. I was going through the staff report, and I noticed that, you know, we approved two resolutions on June 6th, 757, 758. Those resolutions basically documented that we believe that the requirements for the eligibility of annexation were met as part of the approval of those resolutions. And that's the 1/6 contiguity, the community of interest, and all of those items. So in my mind, and I'm just asking a procedural question, since we've already adopted those ordinances and said that those items have been met, I don't necessarily understand ordinances and said that those items have been met, I don't necessarily understand why we would go back and revisit those items tonight.
Well, the reason that you do is because the state law says that you do.
Okay.
You move it forward...
Do I ask a question?
Yeah, you move it forward with your resolutions of findings based on the evidence in front of you at that time, but there are still an opportunity for a public hearing later on, at the ordinance stage, and you may receive new, different evidence. And so, at that stage, you're required under state law to make those findings again. But thanks for that question.
Okay, thanks.
Do we have some things we wanna discuss amongst ourselves before we take a vote? I would just say for myself that one of the issues that I have, and of course, the council made the decisions at the June meeting, but that I wasn't here for that meeting.
Oh, I forgot about that.
So I didn't weigh in on that. I was off doing civic duty somewhere else. But I do have an issue with that contingency situation. It seems like we're really pushing the envelope, just within my thinking, when I look at, you know, other properties and things around. And so, that's really one of my issues. I'll just go ahead and say that, in thinking about, I mean, I think the plan that's laid out, what's, you know, looks to be done is a good one. I think getting a recycling center near us would be a really good thing. You know, I think the improvements that are proposed, some of the comments have been made about Teller County waste, you know, that to me doesn't really weigh in too much. As I said, I'm comfortable with our being able to enforce our code. Sometimes you'll have businesses, I'll say in this case, but sometimes you'll have ones that you have to work at that, but we do have a code enforcement officer, and we can take any steps that we find necessary, I believe. My issue is, in fact, with the annexation and the contingency issue.
I personally have a problem with that, 'cause as counsel says here, it's up to our interpretation what we do with that.
And I was sharing with you my interpretation.
I may have a different interpretation.
Yeah. And that's what it is. That's the reason it's a council with people that look at things differently, it's not just one of us making a decision.
The question I have is, this is not the end of the process here, 'cause we still have to go through conditional use permit and special use permit, where a lot of the concerns of the residents of the area have can be certainly addressed as a requirement to meet those conditional use permits and special use permits. So, you know, I imagine that's still available to them as a recourse.
Again, I think the road issues need to be addressed at annexation.
Yeah.
But I think that generally, yes, that's correct.
But Erin, what would you suggest would be a resolution to the road issues? Because I think we've already determined that if the county has requirements, that's between the applicant and the county, not us.
And I should say that differently. If the council is looking at doing something other than what has been brought to you as a recommendation on how to deal with the road, you should grapple with that at annexation. I, you know, that is, I mean, what's been presented in the annexation agreement is something that has been worked through and thought through, and has had the background and the advice and the technical input from independent engineers and city staff. So I'm not suggesting that you should do something different. Just wanna make that clear.
In fact, it still does come down, because it's a county road, and if there's issues relative to traffic or waits of vehicles and things, if the county has an issue, that's really for them to resolve both now and then, because it's a county road now and it'll still be a county road. Is that true?
I mean, you know, my feeling on that matter is, the way the annexation agreement is written, and the agreement that's been struck within the annexation agreement, I don't see the lever, if it were to pass tonight, that the county would have to go back and require them to do something else more than what's in the annexation agreement, because they don't have to go ask the county for permission for anything else. So I think that's why Erin is saying that's something that we should address this evening, because if we don't address it as it relates to the annexation agreement, or we decide to do something vastly different in the annexation agreement, I could tell you that if I was there sitting as the applicant, I would be very concerned, because just putting it out there that, you know, for instance, if we left it open-ended and said, "Well, they just gotta address the county concerns." Well, the county might come in and say, "We want a six-lane highway built." And, you know, so I think we need to be a little careful. I think we're gonna have to unfortunately make a judgment as it relates to what is reasonable, if we get to that point, on the annexation agreement. I'll just say, you know what, there's no county expert here that has come and testified. They provided a letter that frankly, to most folks, is, you know, difficult to understand and read, not being pavement experts. And so, you know, that's the evidence they presented tonight. They could've come tonight and, I guess, presented more evidence. They didn't. So we have to make the decision based on the evidence we have tonight, if we get to that, even if we get to that point. I mean, to me, that's the third item, I think, on the agenda, as far...
Can we make this part of the conditional use?
I mean, of annexation.
Yeah.
We...
Yeah, 'cause we're not doing the conditional use tonight. We're doing... No, I know, but it does speak part of it, that condition? But they meet certain conditions, as described by the county.
I mean, once again, I'll just say, and I'm not trying to argue on behalf of the applicant, I'm just, I'm giving you the other side of it. I think leaving it open-ended is a very difficult place to put them in, but, I mean, I mean...
And to be honest, I wouldn't be comfortable with adding this letter from the county as a part of it, 'cause I don't understand what else there. And therefore, I would be very apprehensive about including that. I mean, that's just an input to the city, and I'm not...
Did we invite anyone from the county to attend tonight, or was it just left as their option?
Sally's not in her head, yes. I mean, they absolutely were aware that this was being discussed tonight.
Well, that says everything to me. I don't feel that it is an issue.
I think the other question I would ask of staff, I mean, we have our own staff here. Is staff comfortable with the, with what is in the annexation agreement? I mean, staff put it together. Is staff comfortable with it? Because we can rely on our own staff to give us a thumbs up.
Well, they're the ones that are making the recommendation.
Yes, that's what we definitely got from Sally.
So they are, obviously.
And I'm not sure what other, other than planning, what other interviews rolled in on it, but...
What I'll say is that you, as a counsel, rely on consultants frequently. We hire consultants to make technical decisions for us. They help us decide on pavement design. They help us decide on sizes of concrete pipe. And rarely is that challenged, unless you have some expertise within that area. But we rely on those technical experts to help us make decisions. So I would say that we took that into account when we were making our recommendation to you. I'm not a pavement expert. Bill is more of a pavement expert than I am, but what I know about chip seal is that it certainly does more, I think, than just reseal the road. It also increases the strength and the carrying capability of the road. It does provide a sealing component. The statement of asphalt over chip seal, I think that's accurate. I think the two aren't as compatible as you might intuitively think. If we were to do something, it would be a full-depth reclamation to mill that up and mix it with fresh asphalt and put it back down again. But to put one type of treatment on top of another may not be a real workable solution.
I would just offer that we worked with the county, we deferred to having a geotechnical firm go out and rather comprehensively analyze the road. They did borings and did quite a bit of investigative report, which is a lot more than we typically do for even our own city streets. They took the data, they used the county's criteria manual, and came up with a design and recommendation. And that's what the staff report was prepared on. In the interim here, the county's since come back and questioned some of their analysis or their process in the application of the county's design manual, and that's what's still in contention. But I can say at this point that that road has been looked at by a professional with a pretty thorough analysis, and I can't think of anyone recent that we've done, had any of that similar level of analysis done on it.
Okay. And then I have one other, just for the record for tonight, Sally, and it was included in our package. The Planning Commission did review all of this also, had a public hearing on it, and they made a recommendation to us with a vote of seven to zero, I believe, for approval. Is that correct?
Just for clarification...
I just wanna make sure.
Their purview deals with the zoning portion of this, so that is only relevant to...
With the zoning, okay.
The zoning ordinance.
Okay, I appreciate that. I just wanted to make sure, in looking through all that, that we got it right for the record. And, yes, Gary?
So maybe I had a little, instead of being in the weeds here, so the decision we have to make is, it says you whether to assess this property, I mean, not assess, but annex this property within the city's limits of Woodland Park. And I guess we do that based on some sort of set of criteria, but biggest one is, what is in the best interest of the city and residents of the city? So the question I have to ask, if we're gonna annex anything, it doesn't matter what's we're annexing, what benefit does it provide to the city? Because that's the question we really had before us, really. You can talk about, you know, all kinds of things, roadways, but really, bottom line is, what benefit is there to the city if we should annex this particular property?
Do you wanna share your thoughts on that with the rest of us?
Well, I'm just asking the question, but isn't that basically, we're here to decide?
Yeah, and that's what we're...
And we have a staff that provided us with all kinds of information, probably too much for my feeble mind to understand, but, and my five-minute span of attention to contend with, but if that's the question we have before us, now we have to decide, you know, what's in the best interest of the city and the residents of the city.
And does it meet the requirements?
And does it meet the... Well, they've already told us if it's required.
Well, but again, that's what they've told us, but we look at that and we make the decision if we agree with that or not. I mean, that's what we do as legislators.
True, but the ultimate criteria would be what's in the best interest of the city.
Yeah, but we make those judgments.
I can see some benefits to the city, having a recycling, you know, obviously, sector within the city limits, and provide that opportunity for our residents, as well as residents outside the city to use that facility. We obviously need something like that up here, I guess. So I can see some definite benefit there. I'm not too sure we get any taxing benefits much from that. That's been pretty much discussed here, a thousand dollars doesn't seem like too much. But the big issue is, you know, we provided a facility here that's probably needed, and would be taken advantage of by our residents, as well as those outside the city.
Counsel?
Well, that's the question I asked previously, but began with the question of the applicant. If annexation is not approved, would they continue to pursue what they are selling as the primary purpose of this piece of property, and that is a recycling center? And it appears that they would. So what is then the benefit to the city to bring in a piece of property that's going to be used for that purpose anyway? And that's why I asked Sally specifically, what are the tangible benefits to the city for annexation? Are there more pros than cons? And I think, I think it's demonstrated that there is benefit to the city from tap fees to utility fees to the physical improvement of the site. And frankly, right now, regardless of what anyone says, I think it looks like crap. So possibly, the physical improvement of that site would be a benefit to the city. But that's my judgment.
Anyone else? Yes, Bob?
I think the other benefit that was mentioned was that you could ensure strong competition, and it keeps the prices down.
John, you've been quiet. Do you got anything for us?
I've been quiet. Well, the, maybe not directly on point, but I think it was an enlightening discussion for me, good points made by both sides. However, I'm curious, or maybe disappointed, why the parties didn't attempt to get together sometime along the early part of the process, so that we could avoid some of this hard language.
Is that a rhetorical question?
Yes, I intended it to be rhetorical. Otherwise, both attorneys would wanna speak.
Any other thoughts you wanna share?
No.
Okay. Eric?
If you're ready, I'm ready to make a motion and see what happens.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve ordinance number 1187 for the annexation based on the findings that it meets the criteria set forth by state law, that it indeed has 1/6 contingency. There is a community of interest that exists. The area is urban and is urbanized through utilities, municipal utilities, that are directly adjacent to the site. Therefore, it's also capable of being integrated into the city of Woodland Park, and it does not violate any of the eight limitations.
Mayor, I think procedurally, I need to ask Sally to step in.
Yeah.
Did I miss something?
No, I don't...
Well, and Erin can weigh in on this, but I had ordered the motion so that you would start with the annexation agreement. Only that that needed to be approved first before you could move on to the ordinances, primarily because if you approve the ordinance, and then we don't have an annexation agreement in agreement, then we can't...
We could just add a condition that the ordinance...
Let's start.
I just don't know how you approve an agreement without an annexation.
And I was, in fact, looking for the...
The order?
Yeah, the sequence in our packet. That's what I was trying to go through here.
Page eight.
All right.
See, if you use paper and...
Scrolling up and down here. All right, well, then I'll withdraw that motion, and I'll make a motion that we accept the annexation agreement as provided.
Second. I have a motion and a second for approval of the annexation agreement between Southwest Valley Annexation Petitioners and Teller County Waste and the City of Woodland Park. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, then we will take a vote.
Thank you. Carlson?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Matthews?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Turley?
No.
Bravetto?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries six, one.
No, I'd like to make a motion to approve, make sure it's number two here, ordinance number 1187, based on the findings that it meets the items in the state law, the 1/6 contingency, community of interest. Here, it can be urbanized, and is capable of being integrated into the city of Woodland Park, and the annexation does not violate any of the eight limitations.
Second. Have a second? Have a motion and a second for approval of ordinance number 1187 concerning the annexation of the Southwest Valley Annexation Plat 1. Any further discussion? Hearing none, then we'll take a vote.
Thank you. Harvey?
Yes.
Matthews?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Turley?
No.
Bravetto?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
And Harvey?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries six, one.
number 1188, based on the findings that it meets the one-sixth contiguity, community of interest exists, the area is urban or could be urbanized, the area is capable of being integrated into the city of Woodland Park, and the annexation does not violate any of the eight limitations.
Second. I have a motion and a second for approval of ordinance number 1188 concerning the annexation of Southwest Valley Annexation Plant Two. Any further deliberation? Hearing none, we'll take a vote.
Thank you. Matthews?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Turley?
No.
Brevetto?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
And Harvey?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries six-one.
I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance number 1189 for the zoning, let me see the, sorry, I'm looking for all different kinds of pieces of paper here, for rezoning the property from agriculture to community commercial.
Second. I have a motion and a second for proof ordinance number 1189 concerning the rezoning of the Southwest Valley Annexation, containing 1.83 acres from Taylor County's Zone Districts of Industrial M1 and Agricultural AG to the City of Woodland Park's Zone District of Community Commercial. Is there any further deliberation? I'll say that from my voting, now that it's actually annexed and a part of the city, then on this one, I will end up voting yes, because it's now annexed and a part of the city. So, Cindy, we'll take a vote.
Thank you. Schaefer?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Turley?
Yes.
Brevetto?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Matthews?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, counsel. Thank you, everyone that attended tonight, both the applicants and those representing the applicants, also the, everyone that spoke in the opposition. It's appreciated, and we'll move on to the next step. So, I don't believe we have any new business, although at some point, David, we are running late on time, so unless we make a motion to extend, it would be real good to maybe complete. Do you think we can complete in the next 10 minutes?
The things we have left on the agenda, depending on council reports, the staff can finish in nine minutes.
Otherwise, if we go past 11, we need a motion to do that.
Do I hear eight?
Okay, then we'll keep the Woodland Park Beautiful Committee appointment to another time. Is there any public comments not on the agenda? Hearing none, we'll do reports. I'll just say that the artwork from RE2 School District, Elevator Educations, from Karen Gilbert, 7th grade at the Woodland Park Middle School. Upcoming events, Thursday, August the 15th to Sunday, August the 18th, Woodland Park Rock and Gym Show at the Saddle Club property across from the Swiss Chalet and Andrews Candies, 9:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., and it's free. Fridays, August the 16th, 23rd and 30th, Farmer's Market continues, 7:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., Henrietta and Center. Friday, August the 16th, the Third Friday Artwork Downtown will be from 5:00 to 8:00, so that's tomorrow night. Friday, August the 16th, Movie Above the Clouds at the Pavilion on the Green, Sunset, 8:00 p.m., family-friendly movie, free, refreshments available, bring your chairs, and it's sponsored by the Woodland Park Roots Project. Saturday, August the 17th, the POW MIA Recognition Ride Motorcycle Rally through Woodland Park, 10:30 to 11:00 a.m., departing near the Cultural Center. Actually, they congregate over at the high school, and that'll be on route to Cripple Creek. I will also add that you will see new signs on Highway 67 between Divide and Cripple Creek that that is officially now the POW MIA Memorial Highway, and American, local American Legion Post had a big part to play in that, but a lot of people weighed in on that. It was a group effort. Tuesday, August the 20th, Chambers Business After Hours at Caldwell Banker, 5:30 to 7:00 p.m., always a really good time down there. Wednesday, August the 21st, first day of school, everybody be safe. Thursday, September the 5th is the Chamber Lunch and Learn Health Insurance and Humana Program. Contact the Chamber or go in line to register, and that wraps up my report, because I'll keep it short. Next, counsel? Erin, David?
Bill, jump to the paving update real quick.
Sure, since we're all talking about paving, excited about pavement, just a bit of an update. We finished chip sealing eight streets throughout town. We finished pulverizing and repaving a portion of Centennial Trail, as was presented to you in the budget, and we're currently working on Trout Creek Road, a chip sealed road we inherited from the county, and we are in cooperation with Womack Ministries on that project to pulverize and repave Trout Creek from Highway 24 to the city limits. And that polarization work will commence early next week and should be repaved in about a week and a half. Questions?
Question, now that we approved the contract for the FEMA work, when would that likely begin?
We will...
Drainage work?
Yes, certainly. Well, we've received the 401 certification from the state, the water quality. We're waiting for the 404 permit from the Corps, which is in process. As soon as we receive those, we'll give them notice to proceed, and they will start. So, my best guess is within a couple of weeks.
Okay. And I will make one additional comment. Last Thursday, several of us, myself, David Betterie, Councilman Harvey, Bill Ospak, Director of Utilities, Kip Wiley, we toured the Auto Canyon burn area. We're actually up in the mouth of Auto Canyon. We're up on top, a lot of, lot of good, hard work going on. Then Friday, we had the flood. There is a tour tomorrow for the media that the Forest Service is doing. I don't know who else is going on that. We were invited to have one person, and Bill Ospak, since he was there with us last week, will be representing the city and will be in a position to give us some insight into the changes that have occurred as a result of the recent flooding. So, appreciate that, Bill.
My pleasure.
Anything else, David?
Three things, very quickly. Our partnership unit, the 4th Engineer Battalion, as you know, is deployed in Afghanistan on Monday. Another one of their sub-units, the 576 Engineer Company, will case their colors and deploy to Afghanistan as well. Several from the community, to include our Chamber President, will be present for that casing ceremony. Historically, when community, well, the 2014 budget calendar is in your packets, it's there. We'll have plenty of opportunity to discuss the budget, but the calendars there. Historically, when communities in our vicinity have undergone catastrophic events, we have reached out in a neighborly way. We've done that with the town of Holly. We did that with Green Mountain Falls, and there's one of them that skips my mind. I would like to suggest to the council that you make a neighborly gift to the town of Manitou Springs as they go through their recovery period of $1,000 to assist them in any way that they choose to use those funds. This would be devastating for them, and as a good neighbor, I think we are in a position where we can reach out and help them.
Do we need a motion for that to approve that?
I would like to have that, just...
Well, the other thing I got to say about that, and I wrote a letter to you, was that, you know, they, the city of Manitou Springs decided to put parking meters in their thing against a lot of the desires of a lot of the businesses down there, and the people who are really hurting down there are the businesses. Many of them will have to go out of business as a result. So, I would suggest that if you're going to send a thousand dollars to somebody, send it to some of the businesses, not the city.
I'm going to respond to that, because I've had discussions about their parking system, and one of the reasons that that was put in place is, in fact, to discourage employees from parking on the street and make those spaces available to tourists that come to visit and when people are parked there for hours on end. That was my understanding of one of the reasons that that occurred, and it's really pretty revenue neutral for the city.
Yeah, it is revenue neutral, China. But I've talked to a lot of businesses down there, and they were in disagreement of them doing that, and being that the people who are hurting the most down there are the businesses, not the city, you know, I would think...
That being said, I'm going to make a motion that we approve providing the $1,000 to Manitou Springs. They're having very difficult times. They've had a lot of overtime. I think about the challenges that we would have here if we had the fire come through or some kind of destruction like that, and any of that kind of thing can help, and I think it is a good neighborly thing to do, and I think it's very beneficial. Second. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Yes, Bob?
I mean, David's got a lot of discretion within the budget right now. He could have done it, but I think symbolically, for us, our council, to vote on this, to say, you know, a thousand dollars is not much, but it is a symbolic value, and I think it's very important that we speak as one council.
It is, yeah.
Good point.
Thank you. Smith?
Yes.
Turley?
Yes.
Brevetto?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Matthews?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries...
Anything else?
No, sir.
Anything else? Meeting adjourned. A minute to spare.
I understand.